We're here hopefully for the last round of the policies. Hopefully we'll put a smile on Jim's face. We are gonna try and work till we get this done tonight. Not too much pressure, folks, okay?
We can do it.
We can do it. Okay, let's go with the first one. Student policy goals, JA. Have seen any red?
Is it policy or policies?
It's goals applying to the policies governing students. So it is policies.
I would just upfront where it says, first line, the students in the focal point of all operations of our school system. Just, yeah, and the only, I had a question on seven, 'cause I didn't understand, faithful attendance and good work, to promote solid attendance and strong academic achievement, just, 'cause that's what we say we're about.
Well, the attendance part?
It says to promote faithful attendance and good work. I would like to suggest that we say to promote solid attendance and strong academic achievement.
Or consistent attendance?
Well, right now it's not. I haven't, according to some, so, I would, any word other than faithful. Faithful just didn't seem really measurable.
You want solid? Whatever you want. Ruin out daily attendance.
Yeah. All right, put daily in there. I like that.
That's measurable. Thank you.
Yeah. Okay? Next one. JEE, student policies goals.
This is in an effort to comply with the regulations of Title IX.
This is an exhibit, right?
Right.
Yep. Okay.
It says each school district or district system, that should be omitted, because it's really us.
Where are you?
First sentence, the school committee of each school district. This was written for multiple, like in three districts. And then under five, it says the superintendent of each school system.
Yep.
Okay, and the next page?
Number 10?
Yeah.
Number 10 seems like it doesn't apply to us.
It's not relevant to us.
Well, it would be if you take out the first line and just start it with academic high schools, regional vocational, technical schools, and trade schools, 'cause we do have Savicent, that's not Savicent, we have the charter school, we have, we do, we are members of tech.
We don't set policy for that.
Yeah.
So just omit that?
Yeah.
And seven?
We don't set policy for the vote.
On seven, see that?
So take 10 out?
Yep. Omit. And change seven.
Yep, I got it.
Okay.
Just one question on nine. Do we have adult serving on athletic regulatory boards? Does that apply to us? I didn't know that we had such a thing.
I have no opportunity to do that.
They belong on the MIA, don't you?
I don't serve on them.
That would include the MIAA?
But occasionally there are also school committee members who serve on a number of MIAA boards, every year, our president appoints.
I just wanted to make sure.
Okay.
JB.
Perfect. Put in fast for public schools.
Okay, okay.
You customize these, right, John?
Yes.
Yep.
So then?
Back up. I'm already at the next one.
So we're up to JBA?
Yep. Obviously you're gonna put in the district.
And would we have any school district property other than our school grounds?
Wherever a student, wherever a student activity is being held.
Is that what that means?
Even if it's not, like if you, if your junior prom was being held in a banquet hall, for the purposes of policy, that banquet room is school property.
Yeah. Wherever they might be attending.
Because they would have to comply with the regulations in the student handbook attending that student activity.
But school district property, most people wouldn't understand that as such, so would, isn't it where?
Yeah, but I think the next, school district property or property within the jurisdiction of the school district would imply wherever they were.
I thought it made it very clear if you just remove school district property, 'cause it says it the next line. You're right, Martha.
Yeah.
So just take those three words out, just say property within the jurisdiction?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I had a question. At the end, the superintendent will develop administrative guidelines and procedures for the implementation of this policy. Do we have this already in place?
No, because this is a new policy for us.
Okay, but I knew we had. We have the student handbook that talks about harassment quite extensively.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering.
If we actually had.
This particular policy came as a result of the fact that many districts had very comprehensive sexual harassment policies and procedures, but not, and then they had things on bullying, but there are other forms of harassment other than just sexual harassment, so that's why this came into place. It's not, you know, it's more than bullying, but it's not sexual harassment.
Okay.
Attendance areas?
I thought that, that name was a little attendance, I had to really read that to understand what, what that meant, and I didn't know if we wanted to change, 'cause it sounds like it's districting, basically, of how.
That's exactly what it is.
Yeah, so, or is that just, that's what we have to go by, because that's mask, is that what it is?
That's what it's called.
Okay.
If you need to have a re-district, that's what you do, change your attendance area.
Okay. All right, that's.
All right. JCA, assignment of students to schools.
I was cool with that same thing.
JEB, entrance age?
The dates are correct, but I would like to say August 31st instead of February 1st, but I'm only.
I was wondering if it changed. I was wondering if it changed, I didn't know. September 1st.
It's September 1st.
Not August 31st.
August 31st. No, before September 1st, which, which would include, right, August 31st?
Before September 1st. The second paragraph we don't read, because we don't do that. And we don't have exceptions. So the second and third paragraphs here, we don't read.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I was looking at the handbook.
The second and third paragraph.
These are important paragraphs, you have to omit.
Yeah.
We're a September 1 date, the district is a September 1.
Honor before September 1st?
Yeah.
Before.
Before. September 1st.
And then we don't have a, we don't have a screening. You don't have a date, well, do you have a date for the first grade?
Honor.
Is it September 1st also?
We screen, like, we do the screening in the spring.
I know, but not for kids who are not five.
Age appropriate, yeah.
Okay. So just the first and last?
Yep.
Yeah. Changing August 31st to September 1st and dropping on or.
Yep.
Okay. The Taylor schools, no mention of it, right?
Yes.
And kindergarten, uh-uh, we have JF. This says will take place in April. We do our.
All right. So we're gonna go with the JEB is, because there are two versions of that, right?
What?
Well, it was, it was the MAS version.
That's the one we have.
Oh, you do?
JEB.
You don't have the Foxborough one?
No. We'll go with this one.
Okay. So, September 1st.
And the second and third paragraph.
Second, third. So do you have a practice as far as students entering first grade, do they have to be six by September 1st, or if they've completed kindergarten, they can automatically?
Yeah, 'cause what if they don't go to kindergarten here?
What if they don't go to public kindergarten and they're, August 15th birthday?
So you're saying we should put in for?
Well, if not, you're creating a loophole.
Yeah.
If somebody has a late August birthdate, they could actually go to a private kindergarten for a year.
That's what, that's what they do. That's what they do, and they come into our public school.
And then they're coming to, for, they're coming for a year.
As long as they, as long as regular approved, they get approved kindergarten.
That's fine. That's fine, no problem.
School admissions?
JF?
We do our kindergarten, our registration in January.
January.
Yeah, so, substitute January.
Anything else on that one? Next are a couple of exhibits, and the purpose of these exhibits is to ensure equal educational opportunity.
That's according to law.
Students won't be discriminated against entering the school as long as they reside in Foxborough.
So will these be labeled as exhibits?
Because they say E.
Okay, good.
They're made different color paper.
And we have to have it to recycle?
Actually, you don't. You don't have to have it, but it's a good idea because it meets one of the requirements for a number of grants, federal grants, so you can always say, here's a policy adopted by the school committee.
Yep.
On the school admissions one, number two, though, Jim, we don't recruit.
Okay.
It's used by school to recruit students. I don't think that, I don't think we need that one.
Okay.
It doesn't apply to this district.
Where are you, Chris?
Under the first, the second number?
Under school admissions.
Second, okay, second number.
Second number two, sorry.
Okay.
Down the line, it says no school shall discourage in any.
Okay.
Just a good material used by school to recruit students.
And this, this was, first one was admission to school, second one's admission to any courses of study.
Okay. If we need the references, then we're gonna do it. Okay.
Non-resident students.
I don't have.
No, we have, we have.
Homeless students.
JFA BD. I don't know why we're using two different files here, but Foxborough had a policy, students who are not residents of Foxborough may not attend the Foxborough Public Schools. And if they have signed a contract to buy, build, or lease a residence in the town, they may be enrolled at the discretion of the superintendent. Shall provide space within the Foxborough schools for Metco students wishing to enroll in Foxborough schools subject to funding and capped at the lesser of the Metco per pupil funding of 55 students. Superintendent may allow a Foxborough High School student who moves from the town of Foxborough to remain at Foxborough High School if he or she moves after the start of the 12th grade, 12th grade school year. Superintendent may allow students in all other grades to complete their school year in their current school year before they move, if they move from the town after May 1st. In emergent or rare circumstances, the superintendent may grant a waiver to the residency requirement for short periods of time.
Is that in compliance with the law?
Yeah, it's absolutely. But you just can't, you just can't judge tuition for that.
Yep, we need to keep that one.
That's a very common practice.
Sorry, then keep that one.
Okay. And it's code JFA.
None of us had, Foxborough policies weren't.
I printed this off of the same file I gave.
That's all right. If you just keep alerting us, we can, we can work through it, no problem.
JF, homeless students. This is, this is a requirement to the Kinnevento Act.
Could find just one little thing away.
Okay.
School choice, now this is written in the yes mode, that you would admit students. We have another version of this that's the no mode, but what it does is it says, if, annually, the school committee will visit by June 1st. Okay, so you want the no version.
And do you, on that version, do you have the dates of May 1st and June 1st?
Yes.
And are you comfortable with that, Chris?
Yes. Law by law, it has to be by June 1st.
It has to be.
You have to make the decision by June 1st.
We have to vote it, but.
Or you're in. Or you're in.
We're always very.
We voted it, I just wanted to make sure you were comfortable with the dates, 'cause I couldn't remember.
Do you have non-resident vocational educational students?
No. Is that a Foxborough or?
It is a Foxborough policy, goes back to 1988. Do you have a vocational program?
No.
No, students can attend Southeast.
They attend.
Foxborough, all Foxborough residents attending approved vocational educational programs in other towns as non-resident students. That's not Southeast Eastern Regional. This would be if they were gonna go to Blue Hills, or they were gonna go to.
No.
This isn't, not often said. This isn't even relevant anymore.
That was adopted in 83 and revised in 88.
No, the school choice law superseded this, so it's.
Okay, so that's a no.
That makes sense.
Student absences and excuses.
I'm not sure this is in compliance.
This is covered a couple of different ways, well, it's also covered a couple of different ways in your handbooks.
Right, and I don't know that we ever say we excuse it. I'm just questioning the language, 'cause I'm not sure that's what's consistent in the handbook. We say that no absence is excused at the high school.
Do you have a few?
Religious holidays?
There are no excused absences. If you have a doctor, if you were sick, or you have, it all counts for that, 'cause after you hit that 15, it's gonna affect your grade. Then it's reviewed by the board, the disciplinary board, and if you have medical documentation that, that explains why you, technically, you were over your 15 days, so it can affect your grade. So, in essence, there is never a reason.
Actually says no absence is excused.
It's excused.
The terms excused and unexcused will not be used in describing absences, rather, all absences will be explained.
Yeah. Right. So I think we.
And each handbook has attendance type language in it, and since you vote, you approve handbooks, they are in fact the policy.
Okay.
So, just as, as, you know, when I pointed out that there were things in contracts that you might not want to keep in your policy, where as long as you continue to approve handbooks, you may not want to keep things like this in your policy manual.
I think I would.
This is different than that.
Yeah, I would delete that.
It's too general.
If we don't need this for the legal, national laws and we.
Here's your, here's your policy, it's printed in these handbooks.
Right. So either we change this policy to reflect it, or we omit it, right?
Right.
It sounds like that policy is up to the discretion of each building principal, then, if in fact they need.
No, actually, it's pretty clear that for a semester, no, for, 14 absences for a full year course, that's total absences permitted before loss of credit. So if for a full, if they're in a class for an entire year, it's 14 absences. Seven absences for a semester course, including jazz choir, jazz ensemble, MCAS remediation. Four absences for all semester wellness courses. So after that, they begin to lose credit.
Well, I have, I have an issue then with that, if, if somebody's gonna be penalized for an observance of religious holidays, or because of bereavement, or ill, or any of these things that are listed here, I think, I think those should be excused. I don't think they should be counted towards, I mean, what if somebody's in a very.
But that's why you have the consideration of the, whoever's in charge of that school, the principal.
Right. So it's not, it's not really held against you, Katie, but you gotta explain the other.
You have to explain it, no, you just have to say.
Okay, so you have religious observance, but you gotta explain the other, the other 13 days.
Like, I have to write it down, not to be able to document that somebody has been out sick, and that, that removes them from being punished or held accountable for it, per se.
If there's a religious observance, or if you are sick, you're gonna, you're gonna have the medical documentation, so it's not, we have.
Yeah, but he's saying that there's no, it's not questionable. It's, it's, if you hit that day, that's it.
No, if you hit it.
It's after, after 14.
Yeah, after 14.
So if you've been out for more than 14 times in a given year.
You have to explain it.
You start losing credit on the 15, 16, 17.
Unless it's explained.
By one thing.
That's what I said, he said no.
Everyone's treated fairly. So where, where do we?
I don't, I think it's, explained or unexplained, on the 15th absence, you start losing credit. That's the way this is written.
Right, and I think it should be kept.
And if you want to change, you're gonna have to change it here.
Because that's gonna supersede this.
Well, but this is what's covered.
But again, I think unless, okay, so it doesn't matter whether we would approve something like this.
Then you have to go back and change this.
So we'd have to go.
So if you change, if you change that, or if you include that, then you need to go back and include it in here.
Otherwise, that's gonna supersede this.
Are the 07, 08 books already printed?
I think it's something that, that we should discuss. I think, I don't, I don't feel comfortable just saying, well, let's go with that. I think that we don't have a whole committee here.
Yeah, but we don't have a choice.
We do have a choice.
Well, we, no, we approve that.
Well, I know, but, yeah, we don't have a choice right now.
I think, Jeff Theodas could tell you how it's working, and as they continue to close the loopholes and improve attendance, we may in fact, that's an area that we want to revisit and talk with the school council about, but I, I think what's written in that handbook works very well for them, and if we want to continue to raise the bar to improve attendance, so be it.
But I'm not talking about that. I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about these particular situations that are clearly listed here. I'm not talking about the other random ones, I'm talking about these, but I guess it's a time for another, you know, another time for discussion. We can bring it up.
Just, you know, leave it aside, ask to put it on the agenda so that we can really get into it.
Okay.
Okay.
I was looking to see.
I know what you're saying. I do know what you're saying.
'Cause I think it's.
I, I think that some of these.
Yeah. Because 15 is still excessive, but it's consistent for everyone.
Well, in middle school, it's five.
Five?
After five, you, parents will be contacted after five absences in order to remedy the situation. So, the middle school's got a higher standard than high school.
Can we do it at Savicent and the no?
So, so Katie, let's, let's put that on our agenda with the other one.
Okay.
Because these things are important to discuss. Because I think we have to get a handle on somebody's attendance numbers since that was.
There was a policy for high school truancy, class cutting, but all of this is spelled out in the high school handbook.
Okay.
In fact, it's.
Was that a Foxborough one?
Yeah, it was, but 78.
Okay.
There was also a student, early dismissal of high school seniors policy, goes back to 1987. Yeah, it's a Foxborough policy, goes back to 1987, it's actually against the law. This allows for high school seniors to, the last day of regular classes will be on Friday the week of May 15. And state law is normally 12 days, five days of the school year, so.
And we do it around 10 days before, right?
It's no more than 12, so if you do it on 10. JHD. This would be in order, this actually came up in a district.
Okay.
Glad they had this. Do you have the religious holidays policy?
No.
No, we didn't have that.
Okay. This is, I don't understand this, 'cause it's off the same file, I don't understand what they have. Foxborough schools make every reasonable effort to accommodate the religious beliefs of students and staff. Any student in the Foxborough Public Schools who is unable because of his or her religious beliefs to attend classes or participate in any examination, particularly should be excused from such examination study or work requirement, it shall be provided with an opportunity to make up such examination study or work environment which he or she may have missed because of the absence on any particular day, provided however that such makeup examination or work shall not create an unreasonable burden upon the Foxborough Public Schools, no fees of any kind should be charged by the institution for making available to the said student such opportunity, no adverse or prejudicial effects shall re, prejudicial effects, shall result to any student because his or her availing him or herself of this policy. This school district's calendar should be paired as to minimize conflicts with religious holidays of all faiths. And it's 1991.
Do we want for employees, anywhere?
I don't remember one.
By contract.
Okay, so we didn't address it.
Well, it was probably, yeah, it was in the contract.
Yeah.
And that keeps us in compliance with our EEO.
And we make every effort not to have any, any meetings or programs or anything.
I personally would like to see that remain, but the last wording of that last sentence was, the fee business has to go, in prejudicial words.
No fees of any kind shall be charged by the institution for making available to the said student such opportunity.
That doesn't make sense.
Doesn't make sense.
That makes sense to me.
No adverse or prejudicial effects, with an E, shall result to any student because of his or her availing him or herself of this policy.
We're saying we're not gonna.
Reciprocity.
Yeah, right.
Or no retribution or.
In terms of your grade, because you took a religious holiday.
Yes.
Could we say that just a little clearer?
Yeah.
I don't have a problem leaving that, I think that's a good thing to have in.
I agree.
Well, something like, no student grade will be affected as a result of any student exercising this policy, or something like that.
Beautiful thing.
Perfect.
Excellent.
All right. JHE. I don't know what it was in the old Foxborough manual. Okay. Then there was JHF, high school minimum class attendance, which is covered in the high school.
So we don't need that.
And this was old too. Student rights and responsibilities.
I think it's.
That's great.
Okay. JIB, student involvement, decision making.
All question, yeah. We're not doing it right now. Last paragraph.
Do you have students attend, or a student representative come to your school committee meeting?
Yes. We just started this year. Now, we had a student that was interested. Prior to this, we hadn't, so I just wanted to be clear.
Well, way back when, we used to have three or four students, one from each grade, but they got very discouraged and they stopped coming. So I think it's something that I had spoken to Jeff about, and hopefully, we can kind of recreate their participation more than anything else, but it's just.
But having them, this was, this, that language, that actually comes, that's verbatim out of the law. But it was to guarantee the fact that the student advisory council would have.
Someone here.
An opportunity to meet with the school committee. Now, if the school committee is making them part of their regular scheduled meeting, that meets that requirement. And it actually exceeds that requirement.
Could, could we kind of state it the way we do it? Because it was, that was the one thing, 'cause it says, as required by state law, the school committee will meet at least once every other month, while in school, school is in session with the student advisory committee.
Okay.
That's, if they're coming to us, and we're in compliance with the law, then I'd rather just say that that's our policy, so that there's no confusion.
Yeah, but if this is required by state law, then how can we change it?
Well, what you can do is add, add the piece that Kate's talking about, that how you meet that requirement. And to meet this requirement, the student advisory committee representative will.
Will attend school committee meetings.
Will be, will attend school committee meetings and have.
I mean, he's given a packet, and he sits at the table.
And have, and have a spot on the agenda for presentations, or something like that.
I would rather have that, because then it's clear to us what we intended as we wrote this and what our practice is. But there was, Martha, there was a question.
What?
The law doesn't require five? Because it is in the handbook as well on page 32.
Yeah, the law requires that they're five, but if you're kidding, if you don't have five students who are willing to.
If you don't have them, that's the problem.
Well, I don't think they were given an opportunity. I don't think they've been, on this election in the, at the high school, I don't believe that that was something that you could be elected, be elected to participate in. I have a daughter who's on student council, and I asked her about it, is that on the election form? And she said, I don't think so. Jeff, we're here, we can clarify, but I'm pretty sure it has not.
I don't think it must, I don't think it has to be somebody who's on student council, per se, it could be anybody who wanted to.
Right, but the student council facilitates the election process, so that's why I mentioned student council. So she is more familiar with the election ballot, and all students have an opportunity to vote. But I think it should be on the ballot, if, and determine whether there are five, because I think it would be great if there were. I can understand that there might not be five, but it would be, I think it would be good to give that opportunity, if that's what the law says.
All right, so send us back to.
Yeah, but actually, there's two ways to approach this, I think. One is to have a designated representative to the school committee, a student representative, which I think is a good idea. There's also ways to do this five times a year on the agenda, and have student council representatives, class presidents, however we want to frame it, so it's actually very interesting, because then you learn what's going on in the high school. So it's not just one student, from their perspective, but you have students.
Way back when, we had like four or five kids. It was excellent. Who came and sat at the table with us and.
Well, we would do, we did it in Framingham, where we would invite them five times a year. They would come, and it would be a group of them, they wouldn't have to stay for the whole meeting.
Right, just for their part.
They would just do their part early in the agenda, and they would talk about what's going on in the high school from, you know, just all the events, things that are coming up, all of the student activities that are going on, and it's actually a nice way to communicate about what's going on at the high school from the student's perspective, which is, we don't always hear their voice and everything, so.
Something we need to.
I'll talk to Jeff and we'll revisit this, but I, I think it's a good idea.
It was surprising sometimes what the kids would bring up, so it was good.
All right. Student conduct.
No problem.
I had, okay.
I think it's fine, yeah.
Did you have a question?
Yeah. I'm sorry, my notes aren't clear here. Okay, well, you move on, and then I'll, I'll come back to this if I can.
Okay.
Is this in the handbook too? Must be in the book.
I thought it was a good overview.
It's a pretty good overview.
Yes. Yes, I kind of like it.
The specifics are in the student handbook, so they should be...
Nothing objectional.
Yeah.
I don't think you can overstate it, so I'd kind of like to leave it.
Oh, yeah.
Okay? Do you have a problem with that?
No, no, we don't. I'm fine.
What?
I was just curious as to how we could mention weapons and controlled substances and not mention...
Where are you?
...the policies.
Where are you?
On J I C, we not...
Oh, oh, yeah, that was what I was...
Kind of. We're beyond that.
It clearly mentions dangerous weapons and controlled substances, but it does not mention harassment, alcohol, tobacco, and hazing, which is...
Yeah, but I think you go far... Wait a minute, let me look. I think it's...
Further ahead.
We have hazing. There are, but I'm just wondering why some are mentioned here. It's not... It's not...
Because when this law came into effect, it mandated that the Bs have to be printed in student handbooks.
So this addresses that. Hazing is a little bit farther along.
You do, when you list five only, it makes it seem... And then it says below that one of those things has to happen in order to be suspended. However, there are other things that you can get suspended for. And if someone would look at this, they might think that if I didn't do one of those five things, then legally, I can't be suspended, when there are many other reasons to be suspended throughout the rest of the policies. Like, you know, hazing and harass... I'm not sure which ones are here.
Yeah, but they are here farther along.
Right. They were one.
I see your point.
You list five, and then you say, "The school building administrators will not suspend a student or recommend a student for suspension unless engaged in one of the..."
It should say, "Will not suspend..." "School building student will not suspend a student or under the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter Seventy, Section Thirty-Seven H, unless a student..." Because that's what it's implying. That's what this is implying.
Well, in other pages of the policy, it mentions other things specifically. So what if there was a global statement that will not suspend engagement in one of the prohibited actions mentioned above? Or...
In the student handbook.
Other actions mentioned will get to time. Are you going to mention them here? Are they going to be mentioned in the handbook? Are you going to have them mentioned in the...
Yeah, but there's a thing here that says you...
Yeah, I'm figuring... The other thing too, that's a little bit confused.
Talking about the handbook.
The handbook right here.
Yeah.
But that last paragraph, when it says that they won't suspend a student unless they've engaged in one of those actions while on school property or taking part in a school activity off school grounds. And number two and three, they're talking about just private property. So I was a little confused by...
No, they're talking about stealing, damaging, and stealing.
Right, to private property.
Well, private property would be someone else's property on school grounds.
Yeah. In other words, your pocketbook, your...
Your car. Your locker.
Okay, that's where... See, I was wondering, what happens if it's just private property off school grounds?
You're thinking about... No, this is...
We can't do anything off school grounds.
Okay. That's... See, that private... Okay, that's what I was confused about, about the private property, because I thought that meant...
Unless they get charged with a felony.
Okay.
Then another school might get charged.
Then we can do that.
Okay.
But that's not with this.
But usually vandalism isn't a felony charge.
Right.
Okay.
All right, what if we do this? The above prohibited actions and those mentioned in the handbook...
But there's other...
Will be subject?
Will be subject.
Well, you said the above prohibited actions in addition to...
Those mentioned in the student handbook.
Or other publications.
The above prohibited actions are included, which is something like including it in the entire Code of Conduct. That Bs are inclusive to something more.
Right.
That's how this is presented in the handbook. Yeah, Code of Conduct.
But there's other pages within the policy and all that mention it that's not called a code of conduct.
We should make it consistent. Well, yeah.
See, above these five, any of the following actions will be subject to student suspension, expulsion, subject to school committee action, or other disciplinary measures.
Yeah, but see, hazing is now... So this starts off with a general statement of Code of Student Conduct, purpose, scope, discipline, responses, and procedures. Then it begins a list of different offenses. Bomb threats, alcohol possession, academic integrity, displays of affection, disturbing the normal process, drugs, weapons, staff assaults, fighting, harassment, bullying, hazing, language rude profane. So each of these little categories are in here under an overall Code of Conduct.
But it's only called a code of conduct at that school, too.
Well, the Yerhan has a Code of Conduct.
So why couldn't we say any of the following actions and those mentioned in the student handbook will...
Student handbook.
Handbook will subject a student to suspension, expulsion, subject to school committee action or other disciplinary measures.
I like that page. It would look for me.
All right, can you just add that in there?
I'm looking to see what it... In the middle, in the Yerhan, they call it behavioral expectations instead of a Code of Conduct.
Yeah, I do.
Is here... I'm pretty sure they do have something that parents sign that says student code of conduct. Did they change it in the last year?
The Yerhan?
Yeah, we did sign something. I don't remember what it's called. You have to read it over with your child and... Yeah.
The student signed it.
The preceding rules or regulations...
Have you read this handbook with your child? I'm not sure if it specified.
The preceding rules or regulations of the Yerhan School Handbook and Code of Conduct have been read and discussed by students named...
It's not called a code of conduct inside the handbook. It's called Rules and Regulations and Behavioral Expectations. And then there's a separate section on the buses. It calls it buses and bus conduct.
What? Deborah?
Cafeteria Guidelines, this little piece.
I think what's confusing to the public that's reading this is that this says student conduct, and one assumes then all of student conduct is covered under this policy, when this policy actually only addresses M G H seventy-one, Section Thirty-Seven. So perhaps an introductory sentence would help clarify that, saying that codes of conduct for each school are specified in the student handbooks. This particular part of the policy pertains to those activities that fall under the jurisdiction or under the description of Mass General Law. It's stated that way. Then parents who are reading this policy would understand more clearly that this does not encompass the global description of what conduct is allowed and not allowed and referenced in the handbook.
See, whenever, you know, when I conform to school rules, to me, that's each individual school. So they are going to vary. I think we're making it harder than it has to be.
Yeah, we have the expectations for the high school, the middle school, and then all three elementary schools in the exact same handbook.
Just what I'm saying. Conform to school rules. In other words, that covers all the schools.
Maybe we can say that a little more strongly.
Yeah.
To the district or...
I would... Jim, this is written for seventy-one, thirty...
Seven H.
Seven and a half.
Yeah.
So I would put that up front.
Well, Thirty-Seven H, not a half.
I would put that up front, and then I would... So that people know that. And then I would put something in about...
So put this at the top, any of the following actions?
Right.
Okay.
But not everything in Section J I C is regulated by the same code. Is that correct? Because on some pages in this section don't reference it at all, and then others reference other Mass General Laws. So if we put that in the front...
Seventy-one, Thirty-Seven. I don't know what you're questioning, I'm sorry.
If J I C page is supposed to be somewhat of an introductory page for this section, and we say that specific codes of conduct will be stipulated at the school level, but if the purpose here is to be consistent with Mass General Law, I'm suggesting that other pages within the J I C section don't necessarily conform to that statement.
How so? You mean when it talks about dress code or student conduct on school buses?
Well, then you would think that if that's the cover page, then it would be... Everything in here would have a legal reference to Mass General Law, seventy-one, Thirty-Seven H, and it doesn't. So just...
So the question for you, Jim, would be why there is no legal reference cited under student dress code or student conduct?
Right, because there's no... It's local.
So the rationale for Mass including them in the policy is what?
Because that's clearly a local policy issue. If you've read the papers over the last year, you can see what a local debate this has been in Randolph, which was a policy issued by the school committee.
Your recommendation is kind of protects us because it gives an... This is just an overall scope, which allows us to...
The language is general, but it's also a template. As I explained at the very beginning of the process, that if you have something stricter or different, you need to change that template language to match what you're doing here in the district. If you didn't have a policy, a written policy, but you have a practice of something, then we need to make the written word match with the practices. As I said, this particular document was put in to ensure that these seven items are published in student handbooks. That was the purpose of this document.
So can I make a suggestion? That if we're going to put that on the cover page and say...
But this isn't a cover page to anything. It's a standalone page.
But it does appear to be the beginning of a J I C section, which goes all the way to H.
Right.
So...
But they're not... They're just categorized under that classification. They're not... One does not build on the other. They're all standalone documents.
So J I C itself...
Yeah.
Is or is not a general statement for the J I C section?
This particular one? No, it's not.
This pertains to this law.
This pertains to one specific section of Mass General Law on these issues here in and around dangerous weapons or controlled substances.
So maybe what we need to do is just change the header on the top of the page in addition, instead of just saying student conduct, which goes then for the next, maybe, twelve pages. Say student conduct relating to. I mean, some of the other pages say alcohol use, bullying. They don't say student conduct. Well, fuck, you know, it's inconvenient, actually, because it'll say student conduct on school buses.
Yeah, but Section... Chapter seventy-one, Section Thirty-Seven H is relative to conduct of teachers and students. So it is conduct. That's how it's labeled.
But it conducts specifically relating to weapons and controlled substances.
But it's still... They reference it as conduct. And this, seventy-one, Thirty-Seven H.
I know, I would be very comfortable with what Mrs. Marvado said and Dr. Marta said about the introductory, say codes of... I don't... I won't say paraphrase it as well as you, Mrs. Marvado, but to say codes of conduct are detailed in the student handbooks, this is... This section pertains to Mass General Law. I think that... I didn't say it as well, but that would explain to people so that they understand that it's... What exactly this is referring to.
Why don't we just move up? Any of the following actions may subject a student to expulsion by principle under the terms of Massachusetts General Law, and then put students will be expected to conduct themselves whatever is the second one. And that says what this is about. It's in regards to Massachusetts General Law.
I don't have a problem with that either. Yeah. I think the question is, would we remember that that's what that meant?
Yes.
So if we had three or four people who questioned that, and we want to get, you know, consistency in our student handbooks moving forward, maybe we could...
Okay. Now, if we move this...
Yeah.
Massachusetts General Law, make that first. Do away with this and put this second. As an introduction.
Move... Any of the following actions may be subject... Move that first.
Yeah.
And then put students will be expected...
No.
Excuse me, have to one and two?
No.
What if we just started off with it, try to build on the intro? Just codes of conduct or rules of behavior to accommodate the different labels for students are detailed in each student handbook. In addition to those rules, the following...
Okay.
I like that.
The following...
Covered under.
As required under Mass General Law, Chapter Seventy-one, Section Thirty-Seven H.
You can't ignore Mass General Law.
Right, I think that's maybe where the confusion is coming in.
Right, that sounds good.
I like that.
Okay.
And now, when people are looking through all of these policies, they're going to be looking at the fact that, you know, we have to follow the law, and then within that scope, we're putting particulars in there. So there may be some confusion as people are reading through this.
So we're still going to start out, though, with good citizenship and students. I mean, I did like that part.
After that introduction, right?
Yep. After that introduction.
I would say that would be the opening statement.
Good citizenship, okay.
And then put the codes of conduct or rules of behavior for students.
Okay. You okay with that, Chris?
Yeah, I think that's fine.
Okay.
Student conduct on school buses, do we... Dress code, do we do dress code?
Yeah, we did. It was okay.
The dress code, the student conduct on school buses, what we did in E. You see how it's coded?
Yep.
We kept this, but deleted the Rs because of the... It was the same... There was... All this is spelled out in handbooks.
Okay.
What does R stand for?
We kept the two paragraphs. It's a procedure or regulation.
Regulation. Okay, so that's in the regulations?
We kept the two paragraph page and deleted the two pages because it's all very specific in the handbook.
So these are...
Yes, we'll expect it. Okay.
So we are deleting the two pages.
What are we deleting? We're deleting the two pages, this...
That...
The procedures.
Yeah, that's what we did in Section E.
Because they're in the handbooks.
So JICC-R, we're deleting. But we're keeping the overall general one, but we're the actual...
Student publications. This is a brand-new policy for us.
And again, it's Massachusetts General Law, so...
And I need to point out to people that it was recently a Supreme Court ruling on student publications, the student demonstrating holding the sign. And it was upheld that the schools had the right to censor that demonstration. In Massachusetts, we have a different standard. So the school would not... Massachusetts schools can't do what that school did in another state. So you have to be aware of that. And that's why this language is drafted the way it is. No expression made by students in the exercise of such acts shall be deemed to be an expression of school policy and no school official should be held responsible for it.
Okay.
Jim, did you say you did away with the JICC regulation?
Yes.
Because it's in the handbook.
We did the same thing in E, Section E as well.
Is that a little bit of a bus question?
Yep.
Where is that in the high school handbook?
Where's my high school handbook?
The bus conduct? All right. I could find it in the inherent one, but I couldn't find it in the high school.
Two, seven... Sorry. Well, it's not specifically spelled out as bus, but many of the same activities like cursing, fighting, assaults, harassment, bullying. The introduction to the code of conduct includes buses as part of... Where students would be subject to disciplinary action.
The introduction to the code of conduct in the high school one?
Yeah, thirty-four, thirty-five. Under scope, which is the second paragraph. In fact, when students are in attendance at school and at school-sponsored events, whether on or off campus or on a school bus.
Okay, so there isn't anything... There aren't any rules and regulations or even processes that would be true in a school bus that's not here?
What is...
Is that true? Honestly, I didn't even notice that it was there.
I'm not sure what the...
The code of conduct applies to the buses and everywhere else that's described.
That you wouldn't... That you need to... That the possibility is that you're going to... You could lose your privileges, your writing privileges.
Mm-hmm.
Is that here somewhere in the high school? Or somewhere does it just say you are...
Well, if you look at this under discipline procedures, number two says office detention and/or withholding of privileges, which would be right on the bus, so...
Okay, that's... I missed it and I wrote this one at once.
But it's not spelled out like as specific, maybe, as you're looking for.
Well, in the inherent, there's a whole bus conduct section.
Yeah.
And it wasn't as clear to me at this level. And I remember at the elementary school level, actually getting a packet of behavior for buses. I just... One of my issues throughout is the inconsistency. We need to tie up some loose ends between what we're doing at the district level and what we're doing at the individual school level.
We're in agreement on that.
Yeah.
We can take a little time, but we can do that.
You really have to read very closely to see what it is that you're talking about, you know, to find. And I think it could be a little clear, but yeah, we recognize that, so...
Gang activity?
Before you do, I had just one question on student publications. Can you just tell me, Jim, what are the rules for responsible journalism? Did the court side or is that stated in statute or how do we know? I mean, I think we would know it, but this is a whole new legal precedent and area. What exactly would be the rules of responsibility?
There are actually published codes of ethics for journalism.
So that's what they're...
And they've been adopted under like the frameworks for the curriculum, for the program.
Yeah, to begin with.
So that our principals could find that and have no problem.
Gang activity?
Is this necessary and do we want this? I know they're coming, but I just am real uncomfortable with this. It doesn't quite apply to us. It's in Easton, but in another school systems, but I'm just really... Oh, yeah.
Would you look for this?
That's what I'm told. No, Chief O'Henry has said it's common to us, too. It's...
Then why would you want this?
You know what? Because I think it may be appropriate to deal with it when it's here. I'm not sure it's here today and I'm just a little...
Yeah, but you know what? Waiting until it comes is not a good idea either.
We're sending a message. This is not acceptable, just like all the other things.
No.
Yes, we're fortunate that... My secret society, I had no problem with the gang part. If it helps our principals, if it... Because it comes up in the future, I just wanted to discuss it, that's all.
It's already used in reference when it comes to dress code. The kids can't wear hoods or hats. That's already here.
So they... Okay.
I would say this providing service training, Jim?
Yep.
I wouldn't put that in a policy.
No.
We would do it when it came up, but we wouldn't do it as part of policy.
No.
So delete that whole paragraph? Because that whole paragraph is really fair to train.
Yeah, we would do it.
Okay.
Obligation hazing. Have to have it.
But wait a minute. It's not consistent with what we have in our book. Because we talk about three days. Any student who is present at a hazing has the obligation to report such incident. Failure to do so may result in disciplinary action by the schools against that student and could involve suspension from school for up to three days. Don't we say...
Where is it?
The hazing.
If you read it, it's here.
Page thirty-seven, the high school.
The third paragraph.
Oh, all right, in the handbook.
Is that what you're saying? It doesn't...
Yeah, so we have to... This has to match with our handbook. I have no problem with it. We need to, but it talks about 10 days and it talks about something else that's not in the student handbook. So we just have to make sure they're aligned.
Yeah, but does... If Massachusetts General Law says up to 10 days, is that where the 10 days came in?
Well, I'll tell you what...
You have 10 days.
Your handbook is simply the exhibit. It's the next document. That's exactly what it is.
Where are you seeing 10 days? Because this is up to 10 days.
The preceding paragraph, Martha.
I'm sorry.
Any student who is present at a hazing has the obligation to report such incidents.
See Paragraph Three.
Oh, all right, okay.
So even if somebody wasn't participating, but they were there and they didn't report it, they'd be subject to disciplinary action as well.
Okay.
So we need to put that in the handbook?
If you want to keep it in the policy. It's not...
It is Section 18, page thirty-eight, about somebody who knows that another person is the victim of hazing.
What page, Kate?
Thirty-eight.
Report such crime to the public law firm as soon as... Whoever fails to report such crimes shall be punished by a fine of not more than $1,000, but that would be if it went to criminal. Criminal, civil court.
I'm all for it, but when I read the handbook and I read this policy, they don't line up. So however we want to line them up, I just want them lined up.
Yeah, that's okay.
Did you say something about three days?
Yeah, it says something about three days if you're present.
Third paragraph, Kate.
Oh, all right. See, I was looking at the scan.
The difference is someone's present and then the next paragraph is someone who participates.
Right, okay. And it says, you know, again, may be recommended... Any student, the last one, who was an organizer of a hazing activity, may be recommended for expulsion from school but receive no less disciplinary action than that of the participant. But we say clearly it's 10 and we don't say expulsion. So does the law say expulsion here under the requirements, under exhibit?
Let me see. Two sixty-nine.
The policy goes, identifies two other categories of people that the law doesn't. Now, it is someone who is there and doesn't report it or someone who organizes but doesn't participate. The law only defines participants.
So we just want to... Kate just said it, right? We just want to match this up to our handbook.
Yeah. And if our student count... Our school council and our principals support the handbook and we voted on it, then for now, I want to line up what we said. However, it has it in the handbook. The wording has to be the same.
So it'd be deleting the third and the fifth paragraphs.
One, two, three. Well, I don't think you delete them. I think they have to be rewritten.
There's no rewriting them because your handbook doesn't identify either category of person.
Okay, does. Okay, so...
So therefore, if Massachusetts General Law has it...
It doesn't.
It doesn't.
No, this is just some other policy that some other school system thought about. Yeah, well, I mean, we've already approved the handbook, so if we want to revisit it, we revisit both at the same time.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with that, Chris. You had... Could you... You would offer to talk with Jeff on something else? Could we... However...
Discuss it.
What's that?
Massachusetts General Law does...
Yeah, seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen.
Duty to report either.
But it doesn't give a suspension. It just says a fine, $1,000.
And that's in the handbook.
Okay.
That's in the handbook.
So we'll line up with the...
With the law.
Okay. All right, so what are we changing here?
Deleting the third and fifth paragraphs.
And aligning the...
Delete from there, okay.
Take a look at it.
Okay.
And then the exhibit is the actual text from the statute.
Okay. So those we really should have in there. Okay. All right.
Bullying.
And it may be more than what's required, but the... The third one from the bottom, where it says the school committee expects administrators, supervisors, and supervisors, I think we need to say teachers. The school committee expects administrators, supervisors, and teachers to make clear to students and staff that bullying in school building or school grounds, blah, 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 blah. I think it's three-pronged there. And the second paragraph from the bottom, where it talks, the district will promptly and reasonably investigate allegations of harassment. Shouldn't we say again, in hazing? Of hazing, harassment, and including bullying? It just... We have all these three things that it was... Okay, harassment's different than hazing and different than bullying, but... And it says here we're going to investigate. We didn't say it under hazing, but I think that's good form.
We did?
I don't know. I don't think we talked about us investigating. We just talked about what's going to happen to you if you do it, so...
Okay.
Seems like we should do what we do for one. We should do for the other. I mean, I don't know.
So when it comes up, too?
So we're going to put in hazing, harassment?
Harassment, hazing, and bullying.
I wouldn't say including them, just say...
I know.
It's even better. Thank you, Kate.
That's been twice in that paragraph.
Tobacco use. The only thing you might do here is...
This is not consistent with the student handbook.
I was just saying, the only thing you might do here is you have to have the statement. But you don't necessarily need the step one, first offense, second offense, third offense piece, because that is spelled out in the handbook. But you do need the opening statement.
All right, so do away with the procedures.
Because we have our own procedures.
Yeah, we have our own.
And it's important to point out that it is tobacco products, not smoking.
Okay.
What about that? The new MIAA, does that supersede this if a child is...
For athletes.
For athletes? Okay.
So you have to cover the other kids somehow, so you do this.
Alcohol used by students?
I just see student handbook. I know.
Yeah, we discovered it.
That's fine. I think that was fine.
Now, I do have a, maybe an addition that you might want to add as an additional reference. And on this one, you may want to reference the MIAA Blue Book. Because if a student is caught drinking...
On a cross-reference?
Just additional reference or something like that.
Okay.
Because if a student's caught drinking outside of a school-sponsored activity, there's nothing you can do like school suspension, but it would be a violation of the MIAA rules and you could actually suspend the student from the athletic team. So maybe adding it as an additional reference here might...
It's a good idea.
Yeah. Be a reminder for someone to...
And also, the next... Like if they're caught drinking in the spring and they want to go out for football, they are not allowed to go out for football for the next sport. That's what... The way I understood it.
If you caught during or after or before, then...
So is there any reason to... I guess it's better just to use that overall... I mean, it seemed like on tobacco, we were saying what the offenses are. We deleted that. So we're not going to do that on alcohol, so we don't need to put the specifics in here. That's fine. We're consistent.
There was a sexual harassment for students policy. But I would defer back to the sexual harassment policy that we reviewed in Section A because it covered all...
And that we know was updated and we did some of this.
Right, because this is... To keep this in, we'd have to do some serious work on this one because it's not in compliance with the minimums.
But the way this is restructured, we wouldn't need it under this category, so... I think we're all comfortable with that.
Pregnant students. This is actually a Title IX requirement. Wait a minute, there's a change in it, though. The second line of the second paragraph. We can't require physician's approval for a student to continue attendance.
What do you mean?
Well, this is in part, is somewhat due to some of the HIPAA regulations, but it's also discriminatory to require a pregnant student to have medical clearance. If someone had another medical issue, you wouldn't have to have a doctor's note to allow them to continue to school. Broken legs...
We usually give a lot of to not attend much.
Martha, you're the expert here. I didn't read that way at all. I read it that for the health of the mother and the child.
Right. You know, if we just...
I've been told by the Department of Education and Legal Counsel that you can no longer require a doctor's note from a pregnant student. Discriminatory.
That they can physically able to attend school.
I could possibly try it.
Isn't it a lie? What do you think?
It says physician's approval of this continued attendance must be on file in the school. It's the second sentence of the second paragraph.
It's not on ours.
No, it says a student and her physician in cooperation.
Corporation of school staff will develop an appropriate plan.
That's why we're like, what's going on? We're not all on the same team.
Because what we do is write... We write a letter for that.
Don't even delete that.
I saw this as a protection for that student.
It has nothing to do with notes.
Okay.
Searches and interrogations.
This is strange.
I have a question about this.
This was printed off the same file.
Really?
I don't understand why we have two different versions.
It was printed off the same file. It's on the same electronic file.
This is a legal question. I don't... I'm asking. I'm number one. Law enforcement officials can question students without their parent or guardian? Or is there an age that they have to be there to question?
Law enforcement officials?
Well, it says when law enforcement officials find it necessary to question students, the school principal or designated will be present when possible. An effort will be made to contact the student's parent or guardian.
Right.
So that means that police can question. There's not a... Any age? Okay, all right, okay.
I thought there was...
They can't do other things, but they can question.
Okay, okay.
But nothing that the student says unless they've been read their rights, at which point the principal will generally say that's...
Okay, all right, that's what wasn't so clear, so I wasn't... Okay.
I just would like to make sure that Jeff Theodas is very... Is comfortable with this. I think it covered all the bases, but, you know...
May I ask a question?
Sure.
It specifies lockers, automobiles...
Where are you?
Just throughout the text, it just says the right of inspection of the school lockers. But it also gives the right of inspection to duffel bags, pocketbooks, and book bags, backpacks, and any other personal belongings, correct?
Yep, correct.
And then the other issue was, in the recent situation where we had to check students that were in the building prior to leaving the building, is there some specification that there needs to be a same-sex police officer or staff member who does the pack downs?
I think that that might be difficult to deal with. It was an emergency situation and as long as there were two officers.
I think that probably would come under the emergency plan and how things evolve within the school itself. As to who, you know, certainly I would expect that female teachers would be the ones that would be involved with the female students.
Yeah, when Jan...
But that would be something that would come under the emergency plan for the school.
When we were working on it.
As to how you handle, please.
Yeah, no, yeah.
Do we need to say backpacks? Does that include... Does that make it more specific that their own individual property... We have the right to search it at school.
Unless it's inside the building.
Yeah, so we should...
Maybe we should just say personal property and that would be global.
You could, sure.
Well, it says...
Such as their own and school property.
So is that the third paragraph we'd say that? Searches by school officials of student automobiles or other personal property?
Probably put it up right after school lockers. So the school lockers and personal property?
Okay.
All personal property.
And...
Because it includes cars and...
School officials could do that, but police can't.
Yeah, we have more authority.
What if you use private property? Wouldn't that include everything, including cars?
Private property would be... No, no, private property would be, um, their person.
Okay. Oh, all right, okay.
Somebody might say, well, I can go to your house and, yeah, that's, uh, complaints and grievances.
Let's call the warrant.
Are they one and the same? And, because we talk about the review here of grievances, but we start out talking about complaints, so are they one and the same, or are they different? There's nothing in our student handbooks. I like the policy, because it tells people what the chain of command is, but I got confused between a complaint and a grievance. Do we really need to hear a grievance, and they're not, you know, because later we talk about, um, how people should come to us and follow the chain of command when they're dissatisfied. So do we, we need this because there's a mass general law reference?
Well, it's a student's rights, it's, uh, students' rights to, um, address complaints.
Complaints. So could we just leave it as complaints and not go into grievance, and start, is the law start a grievance process, a hearing?
It's on thirty-four. You somewhere close to the actual process.
Uh, that's the hearing prerequisite to exclusion process.
That would be one, but it could be, a complaint could be, that, that's why I'm confused. Does the mass general law refer to it when it comes to discipline, or is it a, any kind of complaint from a student?
Uh, doesn't use either term.
Maybe any condition, like, it's cold in a classroom, or-
Yeah, that's what I, so that's why I just, if it's a grievance, why are we-
What do you wanna call it?
Student complaints.
And then take out hearings and review of student grievances? Or just leave it as student, just jaded complaints?
Well, in part because no, no pupil can be permanently excluded without, for us given the pupil an opportunity to be heard, but it's hearing prerequisite to exclusion. So it's, the term hearing is used in the law.
So what are we trying to say there?
I'm not sure that this is meant to address that particular issue.
Conduct, so we would conduct, so we'll leave, because it's stated in mass general law, we would leave conducting hearings and reviews of student, we're gonna change it to complaints instead of grievances.
Yep.
Is that what you said?
Yep.
Complaints, okay.
We're just gonna call it student complaints.
Right. Okay. Co-curricular or extracurricular activities?
It is a beautiful thing.
No rev, no rev. Anybody have a problem with it?
And the exhibit is equal opportunity to participate, regardless of... You think?
Yeah, in six, Jim, you just had that, I think you wanted to say inter-scholaristic and intermural, you had compensation, I think it's competition.
Oh, yeah. Thank you. Student organizations.
The first sentence, I think you wanna say, shall be encouraged when they met the criteria, meet?
Meet.
And I just had a question at the bottom, very last sentence.
Yep.
The students under group may submit a request to the appropriate district administrator for review of the principal's decision. Is that correct, or would that be superintendent, is my question?
Well, I guess it depends on what it is. If it's a, if the principal makes a decision and it's, uh, like a transportation issue, who would be the, it might depend on who the-
Okay, in our, the chain of command, because this paragraph is all spelling out, it's the principal's obligation, okay? But in the event that the student doesn't like the principal's decision, what is their recourse? And in our district here, it's the superintendent, would be the next chain of command, right?
Yeah.
So that should say superintendent.
Would it ever be assistant superintendent?
Or, it's the superintendent or designated-
Designated.
But that's maybe why it says administrator, because they didn't wanna specify?
No, we were pretty clear in most, last week, saying where it was superintendent or principal, and sometimes we might have said designate, because that was in the law, I think, but I-
Okay. It's easy, that could change.
It's not any administrator.
Shannon, just one other thing, the one right above, the sentence right, right above, student organizations under high school, faculty or designated adult advisor.
An example of that is, in the town I live in, there's a, uh, club, a cable TV club of students.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But the advisor is not a member of the faculty, he's the cable access director, who was appointed by the superintendent and the principal and so forth, so, but he's not a faculty member, he doesn't work for the high school.
Okay. Okay, no, I just wasn't clear with that, that's fine.
I mean, you might have a future nurses group in your-
Yeah, no, that's what those are the kinds of things I was thinking about, but I wasn't sure designated, or, or just adult designate, you know, would be designated by the principal. Okay. I'm, I'm all right.
Keep me whatever we're-
Yeah, I like designate instead of advisor, because it might not be the-
Well, we have stipends, though, so don't we use the term advisor, and it's a, in contract, advise, for instance, every group, and we're saying if we're gonna authorize it, they have to have an advisor for, you know, child, student safety and whatnot, and we pay in the contracts a, a fee, usually it's stipend, and we set it as advisor, so it's not just designate, it's, it's a formal term that we use, advisor.
But it would be either, because if an advisor is not there on a particular day, it is standard.
Yeah, that's, that was my point, Jenny.
So put, or designate.
It's happened.
Yeah, it does happen in some of our, if the person's not-
I thought we were admitting one for the other.
No, I could, I put both.
We're gonna put both, is that what you're saying?
I put both, yeah. Yeah. Because I know in some of our drama activities-
Yeah, you might have somebody else.
They might have someone else there who's not necessarily getting that stipend, but he's designing a piece of the practice.
That's why I think we have it all, like your guy.
Because the bottom line, we always put that supervision.
Yeah, someone there, sorry.
It's in paragraph two as well, says faculty or designated adult advisors, so two places. We're gonna change that.
Oh, good, good.
Second line here, in the second paragraph. So what, I'm really unclear now what we're changing.
Well, it says advisor, we're adding, or designate. Second line from the bottom of the second paragraph, right in the middle.
Okay.
Okay? Student fundraising activities.
Yeah.
Now, there's also, there was a Foxborough policy prohibiting door-to-door fundraising by students. That was nineteen ninety-seven, so it's not that old.
And that's practice, so.
It is understood that up to this point, principals and teachers have discouraged the involvement of students in door-to-door fundraising, the purpose of this policy is to raise the level of awareness and to make clear the school department's official position on this important matter. In consideration of the risks to which students engaged in door-to-door fundraising may be exposed, administrators are directed to prohibit all such activities insofar as school department personnel are involved, administrators, teachers, and other school personnel, not to direct, support, or encourage student participation in door-to-door fundraising.
And that's what we do.
So, you should keep that one.
Keep that one.
That is-
That's J G E A.
Right.
I, my concern on this is how's this impact our PTOs with fundraising?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, too.
Mm-hmm.
So we're gonna keep that policy as one, and then we're gonna move on to the student fundraising activities?
Yeah.
Sorry, what are the letters on the Foxborough policy?
J G E A.
So we're keeping that one, J G.
I mean, we, we need to take this one out, because it's not realistic in the current economic situation, because fundraising goes on all the time with candy and candy wrappers.
Yeah.
Student activity accounts.
Wait, we had contests for students, we had student activity.
No, no, that's what, no, go forward.
Oh, yeah, there it is, right, this is one, okay.
This just reflects the-
This is the law.
Yep.
I would just like to have Paul Jackson take a look at it for the line. I know it reflects the law, but we may call it something else, because my question is, do we have student activity agency accounts? They may be called something else, but I would just like to have Paul Jackson take a look at this to make sure that we're-
Sure. Contest for students. Do you like to mention the, the speeches? Yeah.
Student travel.
I, how does this go, are we admitting this, or, because we have an overnight travel policy, so is this just-
It's the exact same document.
Okay, so we're gonna say, where is it, then?
We'll put it word for word.
Because this is the new one, this is the updated, because-
It's the, yeah, it's, yeah, nineteen, oh-
Oh, oh, it's approved, oh, okay. We liked ours, and we have the-
It's the exact same one.
Okay, so this is the one.
Because that's where it came from.
Okay. So we're keeping this in here as it is?
Yeah, you just call it late night and overnight student travel, so we'll change the title to reflect what you are used to calling it.
I just have a quick question. I know that there was issues of how many chaperones were needed, and it wasn't spelled out anywhere, it's not in the high school handbook, it came up with the trip to Washington, D.C., and I didn't know if there was any legal requirement of how many, or if that's just a-
Usually it's up to the, it's up to the principal, it's been up to the principals to how many you have.
I think, as a parent, I would wanna know what the standard is in the district for how many chaperones per overnight travel would be, somewhere, maybe not here, but maybe in the high school handbook, I think I would wanna know what the standard is, so that if my child is going, I would know.
I personally, I'd like to see it right now on the consent form.
But that means it could be sus- suspect to the advisor of that group.
No, not to the advisor, it comes from the, the principal.
But what's your standard? When people come to you and stand before the school committee and you're approving overnight's travel, what's your standard in the back of your head? How many, what's the adult-
One and six, in fact, they came to us and we said not enough chaperones, and how will you fund it? Because we ultimately approve it.
Right.
But there could be a situation, I mean, it's one standard for a certain type of group, that, I, I agree with Martha, the principal might say, okay, for this music, let's say, competition, it would be appropriate to have, you know, one and eight for a rea- so I don't wanna name a number, I mean, there's a standard for different types, it depends on the activity and the, and the group, but I think-
Would it be not less than?
You know what, I would, I don't know that I'd wanna be a pigeonhole, I-
Only because the problem is, comes with trying to fund this, and for people to try and come up with-
Right.
The extra money for the chaperones.
But maybe you could just say an appropriate number of adult chaperones will be, it's just something, there's no mention of it at all, in the policy.
But there's, there's still a recourse, because we will approve it, or not approve it, so if there's questions or concerns, then that's the time, too. If you don't feel satisfied with the advisor or the building principal, then you can come to the school committee.
But sometimes things go along a certain point, like, a lot of the kids were already signed up for that trip long before, it came before the school committee to approve it, so as a parent, I wouldn't have known what was gonna happen at the school committee before I would have had to decide whether I would allow my child to go.
You know, we do talk about that in this policy, it says your final approval will not be granted until, um-
Well, I, I just know that logistically, the trip is well-planned before the approval was processed.
You know what, you're right, I'm getting confused on, I thought we had, we had a more specific policy, you're saying that we changed it, we're using this one. I, I think just to allude to appropriate chaperones, we could throw that right in there with everything else.
This is our policy, though, Ken.
I know.
This is the exact one that, that came from Martha.
I think Janet was saying-
I was, because I was curious, what if we had a standard, and I couldn't find it anywhere.
Is it anything there?
I looked in the old policy, no, there's nothing, there's nothing in the, and that includes day trip type things as well, there's no, there's no reference-
Chaperones, just put logistical details involving transportation, accommodation arrangements, chaperones and fundraising efforts, that would, you know-
Just put in, yeah.
Chaperones, because you're right, it's not referenced.
But you're assuming that anyone, that the general public of, or general population of parents are actually gonna be reading the district policy manual?
No, they will be talking with our principal, and our principal will know that organization, that trip, and will also be advising them, and I, you know-
I would assume if somebody's gonna have a trip, they're gonna outline it to you as to what, you know, how many people are going, what the chaperones are, well, it should be.
Well, what, you know, Washington was one and ten, that was a right, that was, that was a very comfortable number. Another type of, you know, the cheerleaders, it was a different number, because, because of what they had on their agenda, and, and they were gonna be at different places, different locations, so I don't think you can predetermine-
I don't, I'm not questioning whether or not it should be flexible based on the venue that the kids are going to, whatever, whether it's curriculum-based, whether they're in one room, in like an auditorium setting, or whether they're wandering the streets of Boston. I don't question whether that should be flexible, but unless, as a parent, if you're sitting at home, sending your kid to Canada, you don't know what the ratio is. It's not on any document anywhere.
Do you want to see that on something?
Oh, I, Shannon, I think your point is, is well-taken, I'm just thinking of my own experiences with this over the years, and I, I don't think, I don't, I don't think I've ever, gonna move one beyond my level if it was ten, if it was more than ten.
Yeah.
So, but I, but I do, do agree that there are some that you need less than ten.
Right.
But I don't ever remember any of them that it's not.
As a parent, if you don't have-
Right? I mean, any elementary, middle school, high, I don't remember any that were, that we wouldn't require ten, you know, chaperones for every ten students, and you're right, it depends on the activity, if you, you know, if you're in one location, ten, but ten would be, because that, you know, in terms of safety, you would be looking at designating those parents to be responsible for those, and I wouldn't, I wouldn't, as a parent, go myself if, if I was responsible for more than ten.
For more than that.
So I think, I think we could say, I think we could say, I think it's a very safe policy, ten or, or under.
Ten or less.
Ten or less.
It's funny, because as you have children coming up through preschool and kindergarten and elementary school, you're used to dealing with the ratios, but as you get to middle school and high school, it gets a little buzzy.
I can't remember an elementary trip, I didn't think I'd ever come past five again. One, two, three.
Yeah, no, I know, I mean, that's, how do you do it?
Except when we go to the theater, when we take the kids to the theater, then we don't even take a parent, we just take the teachers along, because you really don't need it, you know, right up here to the or, something like that.
Yeah, we've had situations where parents wanted to be on chaperones, and we said, no, it had to be a school for you.
Would it go here, or would it go in the field trip policy that you guys worked on two years ago?
From the tail to the orfam, right?
Oh, field trip, oh, maybe that's where we had it.
Is there a reference to overnight travel or field policy?
We reference the overnight policy.
Cross-reference back to each other.
Was that in K?
I, I J O A.
They're being consistent one way or the other.
I'd be setting a standard, a minimum standard, and then again, just having that flexibility, because, I mean, I know I've been on field trips and I've only had three kids in a group, you know, and then there's other situations where, like, I mean, over time, you wouldn't want that.
I J O A.
So it's-
I J O A?
Okay, what would it be number?
I J O A, I'm in trouble here.
I think especially as the kids get older, there's, you know, it's gotta be a little more relaxed.
Field trips, are we combined?
Now, would that-
I J O A and I J O A dash one.
Would that include, would that include, like, dances?
Would she be the previous or the-
It depends on where you put it. It depends on where you put it. If you put it under field trips, it's a overnight travel.
It would just be student travel. Oh, yeah, that's right, okay. I think the dances. The range here was definitely.
I'm almost sorry.
Sorry. Can you try to find it?
Yep.
I don't think either one that was in your packet last time spells out a chaperone to student ratio.
Yeah, that's the field trip one.
Where, where is that? What's that? Is that in the standing?
I J O A. I did that section.
What is I?
Instruction.
Instructional section?
Yeah. It's where field trips fall under the instructional section.
It says all trips are properly supervised.
You see, it gives the superintendent the leeway because it says all trips are properly supervised. So it's at your discretion as to how many per group when you're reviewing it. And I think that's more appropriate than trying, I, I think you, it should be your call as to what you, your expectations are for that field trip. I'm not, I'm comfortable saying what number it is.
But is the building principal gonna contact you when there's a field trip?
They have to.
To tell you what the ...
He has to okay it.
There's a lot of field trips that go on though.
And the overnight travel section doesn't reference back to the field trip section at all?
It will.
And you would still have to go to student travel.
Are you comfortable with that?
I am. I've added a cross-reference back.
Couldn't that just be a procedure that we, you know, that we ...
Did also put the legal reference for this policy as well.
I mean, I'm comfortable with making that decision, especially when it comes to overnight travel, is to how many?
This policy came as a result of that, was it Natick? Natick?
Newton.
Newton. A bunch of students were going to Nova Scotia and the bus driver got tired and the bus rolled over. So that, that originated, this policy. And this is particularly geared towards students by traveling motor coaches, late night or overnight. So.
So what are we gonna do?
If you're gonna, actually, if you're gonna put a chaperone component in, it should go under the field trip document, not here. And then have the two documents cross-reference with each other.
Because it says, you know, he has to, okay, he has to ...
Because just going to the Museum of Science, this policy wouldn't apply.
Right.
What is this, what is that? Can you reread that statement to, just the statement that says something about chaperones again? I don't have that.
It's just supervision. It's under ...
All field trips will be properly supervised.
Properly supervised.
That's it.
And he's the one that oversees it, so he would say, set the number depending on what the field trip was and what the number of students were. So it would be his call.
And does it say at the discretion of the superintendent?
Yeah. It says superintendent, and then it lists the things and it says proper supervision.
I think that that's, it's worth putting that one statement in here too. If I'm reading this section, I'm not gonna, I'm not necessarily, obviously, I'm sitting here with the J section and not the I section, so I don't have it. But can we just add that, that same sentence into this as well?
That it will be properly supervised?
Right, exactly, whatever verbiage you have under the other.
With the field trip.
Yeah.
We can do that, sure.
Yeah, that's expected.
There's, there's no conflict on that, so.
I'll put it in the gym someplace.
Are we gonna put the word chaperones in when it says in the details involving transportation, accommodation, arrangements, chaperones? Okay, good.
Interscholastic athletics.
It's a beautiful thing.
Now, Foxborough had a Hockamock League decisions policy.
What was the date on that?
Eighteen eighty-seven.
Put it away. Put it to bed.
High school principal and the athletic director shall represent the school committee in all matters concerning programs sponsored by the Hockamock League.
Revenue and come.
That's what they do. Athletic emphasis in off-season.
What was the ...
Nineteen eighty-four.
See, this is why we got finished.
And I'll be honest with you, I don't even know what this says. I read it three times. It's ...
How, can I only put three?
Academic eligibility for high school students, this is actually less than MIAA's requirement, so. Homeschooled student participation in the discholastic athletics.
Oh, we have to have that one by law, right?
Um, only if you allow homeschooled students to participate in athletics.
We do, it's in our student handbook.
Then you need to keep this in place.
I believe.
Oh, is it in the handbook?
We've referenced homeschool. We've always, oh, we referenced it under our homeschool policy. We talked about that.
And we allow them to be in the C and B and they can do anything.
Yes, absolutely.
So do we need it if it's referenced in another place, Jim?
Where is it referenced in the, I think?
We did homeschool last year.
Yeah, we did last week.
Oh, so you, on that policy in, in the instructional program, you, you brought in that ticket? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
We don't need that one.
You don't need this one. Wait. Student discipline. J K.
First paragraph, I know we're customizing it, but last line of the first paragraph of all students or any classification thereof enrolled in the public schools of the district, it will say Foxborough, enrolled in Foxborough Public Schools, right?
Yeah.
My only thing, the second to the last paragraph, it talks about teachers, but it, I really think you have to insert also administrators where it says, within the confines of the classroom or as they occur by reasonable but firm reprimand and/or by teacher or administrator conferences with the student and/or parents or garden, guardians. My reason for that is that teachers may or may not in our system have that conversation directly. Our administrators, particularly principals and assistant principals would, may be the disciplinary to have that conversation with, also with the student and/or parent or guardian.
Okay. Corporal punishment. We have to have.
We have to have it. I do use that.
You have to have that statement.
That's incredible though.
When you're Massachusetts. When I was reading about the new superintendent coming to Boston from Tennessee, it's one of the things I did away with was corporal punishment in Memphis.
Yeah.
In the last few years.
Yeah.
That's incredible.
Yeah, there's still corporal punishment.
I had to read it twice.
I thought you were in another culture.
You have a physical restraint of students policy. You call it restraint of students in Foxborough Public Schools. Couple of things here. Is Linda B. Waters still the Director of Special Education?
No.
Well, it says in the event the principal is alleged to have engaged in improper restraint practices, the report should be made too. Who would that be?
Can we just say the Director of Special Ed? Or do you have to name the person?
In this one, you do not need the name in this one.
I would not, I would go with the Mass policy here. Right? Why would we be going with the old one?
Because obviously, somebody did some work and put this together or did some ...
Well, because I think we were required at the time, so. I think somebody told us we needed one.
Yeah, you did.
My only question here, does the law specify sixteen hours of training and do we have a mechanism to capture that? Because I ...
Yes.
Yes.
So.
And we have recertification, we have a recertification program also that everyone who's trained for the sixteen hours has to be recertified every year.
I think this is more appropriate to go with.
We don't have that one.
You mean the Mask one?
Yeah, the, yeah. We don't have the Foxborough one, so is there anything?
No, that's why he's reading it.
Yeah. I was just wondering if there's anything else in there though.
No, it was just, it, it, it was very much the same.
Okay.
See, the problem is somebody brought it to our attention that we didn't have one.
It was probably your department event.
Yes.
Requirement.
Yeah. That's how it came about.
My only question was on IEPs and it's, it's very well covered, so I think it's, I think it's fine.
All right, so we're gonna go with the Mask one?
Okay.
Okay.
Student welfare.
I have no doubt. I couldn't be articulate on this one.
I had no problem up to the end. I guess I have a question where it says safety on the playground and playing field. District shall provide safe areas and at less periodic inspection, instruction. What does supervision of both organized and unorganized activity mean? Can you give me an example? Was it, what are we ...
I think it's the kids on the playground. Recession.
Recession is an unorganized activity.
Is that what we mean here?
Gym class or ...
Gym class is organized.
That would be organized.
Yeah.
But you can have organized and organized.
So it's better to go with unorganized and everyone would know what, except for Kikeminski would know what that means. Okay.
Under fire drills, you just make that specific to district cooperate with the Foxborough Fire Department in conducting fire drills.
But isn't it also the police and don't we have to reference now our emergency plans? I guess it's not, it's not total.
Not for fire drills. There are other types of emergency drills you will run in accordance to your emergency plan.
But that's not required by Mass General Law?
Fire drills are required. And this, you know, the principal has to submit the report and give it to the fire chief and that's very clear.
So Mass General Law doesn't require anything for lockdowns or evacuation or ...
I'd say only about, if I had to guess, I'd say only about seventy percent of the school districts have emergency procedures manuals in place. And then of the seventy percent that have, and maybe only half ever practiced it.
We do.
But do we want to include that, that will under our student welfare?
Well, we did emergency plans back in section E.
Okay, oh, yeah, that's right. We don't wanna reference it here.
We can cross-reference that policy.
Because it's the student welfare.
We can cross-reference that policy.
And you're gonna change something on the fire drill thing?
Yeah, just the, you know, the, the Foxborough Public Schools shall cooperate with the Foxborough Fire Department in conducting.
Okay.
Is practicing a bus evacuation required?
Yes.
And is that listed somewhere?
Yes, in the transportation section, section E.
We do a, a rear door evacuation in October and a front door in May.
I can remember doing that.
And if you have railroad, you actually have to do it. Student insurance program. This is not a required document.
Do we, we offer that, but it's not required by law?
It's not a required document. You have to report, you have to offer it. Or, and it's usually a non, no cost to the district, you just, you know, this is the agent for which the information gets to the students.
If you wonder how much it's gonna change because of the new laws.
I was just gonna think the new law, where everyone has to have health insurance.
Yeah, be interested in how they incorporate it.
Well, we also, don't we offer accident insurance too?
We used to. When you first came out, you know, the information bank.
Don't we still in the elementary schools, we, in case of accident, we send home a form that they can purchase it if they want?
Usually to athletes. It's like additional coverage.
Yep.
So it kinda covers the deductibles.
I, I don't want to, I don't want to teach middle school children.
Student health services requirements. Again, we're referencing the emergency procedures book here as well.
Can we leave in?
I have some questions on that one.
I'd like to leave in the, the document area.
Oh, we'll be.
Okay, good.
It's not a note, it's just ...
Okay. A good reason. Okay. Kate, what was your question?
The second page is really confusing to me.
Yeah, the first sentence is not too clear.
In case of illness or injury, the parent or guardian will be contacted and asked to call for the student or provide the transportation. I think we're contacted to pick up the student and to provide transportation to the appropriate medical provider or whatever. It's, it's not clear to me.
Yeah, same with me. Yeah. Sounds like the parent or guardian will be contacted.
And asked to call for the student.
You're asked to pick up the student. Because in the next paragraph, if you don't, we have a contingency plan.
Will be contacted.
Yeah. To pick up the student or ...
And ask to make arrangements to transport the student.
Yeah.
I just thought when it said call, it was come for the student.
But if we have a seriously ill child, we, I, I, this past year, I went to the hospital in the ambulance and called the parent because the parent couldn't get to the school and gave permission for us to take the child to the hospital and she met us there.
And so you made that call because of the severity of the illness? And I think that's covered in the, in the next paragraph. Do we need to say that, that, we say that it won't be borne by the district. Do we need to say that transportation is, is the responsibility of the parent or guardian? And then if they, or are we better protected by just saying, just seemed a little negative and rough?
Well, it was there to, you know, because we've had cases where, well, I didn't call the ambulance, you called the ambulance.
Absolutely.
Yeah, you do.
Yeah, you do need.
So could we say that it is responsib, can we be clear and say that it's a responsibility of the parent or guardian to provide it?
Yeah, but all you have is the transportation. I kinda like this better because it's saying, we're not gonna pay for it, so therefore it's up to the ambulance people to ...
The issue is, is if you're gonna require them to provide it.
Yeah.
All right. And if they, they could then claim, I don't have the money to pay for the ambulance, so you have, the child has to wait and then you make a call that the injury is so severe, they need to get ...
So that you answered my question, so it is better to say it this way?
Yes.
Because ultimately, the call to transport is really out of your hands. It's gonna be the EMS people who respond when you call the ambulance.
Right.
They'll just, they could, they'd take that decision right out of your hands and say this child needs to go to the hospital.
This protects us because it's, we're not gonna pay for it.
So, in the second paragraph, second sentence, if the parent cannot provide transportation and the student is severely ill or injured, an ambulance, well, it just sounds strange as an ambulance may be called. The child could be laying there with a broken leg and the ambulance may, it may not be called.
I don't, I don't think, I don't think, I don't think you should label it severely because that's a judgment call.
Generally speaking, no one feels qualified to determine whether something is serious or not.
You don't wanna.
As far as the school, the school's concerned.
But that means that if, that means obviously if I'm not on school property, the school calls, my child could have a broken leg and need to go one way or the other. The school's gonna call me first and then I'm gonna stand in the middle of ...
And either get your, either get your permission.
No, no, you're not gonna call, we're gonna call.
Get your permission to call an ambulance, or let you know that an ambulance is being called, that your child's being transported to so-and-so hospital, you might wanna meet him then.
Okay, so it doesn't mean that I'm supposed to be called.
No, 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 no.
No, that actually happened to my son when he was in elementary school and they tried to contact me, they couldn't reach me. And then they made the decision to call the ambulance and then they, they got ahold of me and said, you know, they're on their way and, and like you said, the building principal.
Right, well, based on the first, the first sentence, it says the parent or guardian will be contacted and asked to call, call for the student or provide transportation, Right, well, based on the first, the first sentence, it says the parent or guardian will be contacted and asked to call, call for the student or provide transportation, which means if I'm supposed to be providing transportation and it's not going to be me, then I'm supposed to call the ambulance.
No, I think we changed, we changed, we changed, we're, right, Jim, you wrote, rewrote that. So how will it read now, so?
Will be contacted to pick up the student and or, and provide transportation to a medical provider. Transportation of an ill or injured student is not normally, and if a parent cannot provide transportation and the student is ill or injured, an ambulance may be called, but it doesn't say, you know, it's not saying the parent's going to call, it's just an ambulance will be called.
We know.
So you fill out that form out at the beginning of the school year, authorizing the school to approve my child if that's.
If, if there's a determination that your child needs to go to the hospital, they're going to call you first.
And if they can't get you, they're going to.
You might say, no, don't transport my child, I'll be right there. That, and that, as you're, as the parent, you have the right to do that.
Right.
But if the, if the child's injured and it, to the parents or the nurse or anybody giving first aid appears to be serious, their first call's not going to be you, it's going to be nine-one-one, then they're going to call you.
Right, did I say somewhere, I may not be clear, how does the hospital that the child gets transported to get specified?
It's the closest one depending on the emergency, and that's not our call, that's the EMTs that come up.
The ambulance drivers will make that determination. They may know that the closest hospital is closed, the emergency unit may be closed for a reason.
So they're going to redirect.
So they're going to go to the next closest hospital or.
Well, here it would be the Novo.
Well, I mean, but it's, so it's, you know, that's really up to the ambulance drivers.
I saw that somewhere.
Or we've had, like, the last five years, we've had a very serious child, a, a child in the school, and the parent specified the child had to go to Hasbro. The fire department knew it, it was on file at the fire department, it was on file at the Taylor School.
But it also, it also.
That's only one condition term.
But it also depends on what's going on at the time.
Exactly.
You've got to, you're going to make a stop along the way if you have to, or you're going to get extended.
And you know, lots, and several times the ambulance has been called, and when they come into the school, they assess the child after the nurse has.
Oh, yeah.
And they may say, you know what, I think the child doesn't need to go to the, go to the hospital.
Right.
So then you would call the parent, so, you know, you, you do what's best for the child at the.
All right, so you've made the changes on this.
Yep.
So up to physical.
Physical family students.
And ALCA. I don't know if the grades are right.
No, I've got to ask some questions here.
Sorry, Kate.
Fourth, seventh, and tenth.
Is it true that every student gets a physical exam by the nurses? I believe that to be true. Okay, but it's every single student, every single year, or just certain grades?
Certain grades.
Just certain days.
Four, seventh, and tenth.
Are we, I thought as a parent, we were required by law to submit a physical exam and proof of the immunizations.
Yes.
Fourth, seventh, and tenth.
Yeah.
And when you start school, when you enter the school.
I read this, I read this, every student will be given a general physical examination four times. That, to me, whose responsibility is that?
Parents.
Okay, it doesn't read that way to me. Okay, because every student will be examined once in the school year for screening, okay, but talking to the school nurse. Then it says, okay, if I read that, every student will.
No, but this is for sight and hearing.
Okay. Okay, no, the next paragraph, every student will be given a general physical examination four times upon entering school. That's, it's every student will be required to submit a physical examination four times.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Okay, because we don't pay for that.
Well, if the, if they can afford it, you.
You do.
You might have a school physician.
But, but you know what, I, I, but I thought the law was very specific that we're required and we're told and our nurses send out a letter that we're, we, we've got to do this and take it to your family doctor, so.
That's correct.
Or you won't be admitted.
That's right, so we need to make, because we don't pay for that one.
However, we've had cases of homeless children.
And then that's absolutely different, that's absolutely different.
That's what we have the school.
Do you want to say every student?
Every student will be required to submit proof of a general physical examination four times.
Yes, that's what, yes, that's what's.
Two steps ahead of us, Jim.
Yep.
That's what I just said. That's what I just said, we need to change it.
Documentation.
I like that better. Submit documentation of.
A general physical exam four times.
Will be required to submit?
Yep.
To submit documentation of a general physical examination four times. I don't think we do the vision each year.
That's why I asked that, Chris, I thought it was only certain grades.
All right, why don't you ask the school nurse?
Entering school in fourth, seventh, and tenth grades.
Yeah, the vision, I think it's not.
So we need to check on vision.
Do they? Okay. It is done every year.
In the elements, vision and hearing.
I don't think it's every school year for the student.
She, she said it is in her school.
On admittance to fourth, seventh, eighth, twelfth. So you have to submit it.
So we have to, it isn't elementary, we need to check the little school lines.
Oh, all right.
All right, my other, my third question.
But there is a stipulation somewhere that it must be.
Yeah, but that's a, that's a department of.
Do you want to read for elementary, Chris?
Regulation.
Because I think the laws have changed.
Yeah, we just have to say.
We don't have to do it now.
All right.
My other question in the third paragraph, it says, every candidate for a school athletic team will present the signed consent of parent and guardian to participate on a squad and will, with the signed consent of parent or guardian, be thoroughly examined to determine physical fitness. The school physician will examine athletes, except, I'm not sure this is.
Accept when a family wishes to have the examination.
I don't believe that's what our practice is. I believe, and it is not our practice. You have to submit again documentation that you're, that you have, you've been examined by your doctor. If there's, if you don't have it or there's a situation, but that's part of the consent. Because our, our school physician does not give general physical exams.
Most, that's the way it is in most.
All right, why don't we just do away with, just says, a written report stating the fitness of a student to participate, signed by the physician, will be sent to the school.
So we take out on a squad and what?
Yeah, all that.
What was it, what other?
Just do away with the, yeah, a written report stating the fitness of the student to participate, signed by the physician, will be sent to the school principal. It would be in the, it's the last one.
Take it out this.
Taking out that.
Second sentence?
Yeah.
All right.
Yep.
Okay.
Can I just ask you another question? Last paragraph, school nurse will make monthly reports to the superintendent, number of students examined, number excluded, number recommended for treatment, or special adjustment of work. What does special adjustment of work mean?
I should think schoolwork.
Accommodation. Sometimes, yeah. Had to cover another building, one field trip.
So we're asking for them to do their schedule, is that what that means?
No, if they weren't in the school during a particular period of time, they were, they had to go on a field trip or whatever the case was.
That just seemed very odd. Our nurses do all this, we know that, okay, we look at it on a regular basis, but that adjustment of work just didn't seem to make sense. Would Massachusetts general law require that?
It's, it's not a requirement on the law.
Okay.
Okay, well, you got a problem with her, Chris?
As long as you're somebody, you know what it means.
Or no, as long as the nurses know what it means.
I have to check to see if they do that.
Well, we, they keep records of who there's.
They keep records, but doesn't submit it to me on a monthly basis, like.
Oh, you're right, it's an annual, and it would, yes, you're right.
Yeah, the other thing is because of HIPAA and everything else, they can only tell you what it is, not who it is.
Right, so they made reports to us.
No, so that's the name.
They keep the information.
Yeah, number student seen.
Chris is part of our grant, the head nurse.
Yeah.
Part of the grant.
It was part of the computerizing it.
This is saying it will give you.
That's general law, the nurses have to do that.
You just need to look into it and make sure it's.
Yeah, let me look into that. Jim, the other one would be that.
You need to check with the nurses.
Well, that's what I said, check with Sharon.
I'll check with this one. Whenever, this, the second to the last paragraph, whenever the school nurse finds a child suffering from any disease or medical problem, situation will be reported to the parent or guardian, period.
Yeah, not in writing.
It could be, you wouldn't put something in writing that, if it was a flu or something, you know.
Okay.
And what about by personal visit? That, that seems like that would be unlikely.
No, it's just period.
Oh, I already got it.
Yeah. And we do file those, we do have copies of the reports, we maintain records.
All right, so you'll tighten this up with Sharon?
Yeah.
Okay.
Russell put the word current in front of general. Inoculation of students.
This is true. You have an exemption for religious beliefs?
Oh, yes.
I never thought we were allowed one.
Well, you know, there are some people, because of the controversy about autism and whatever, there are some parents who are opting not to give certain immunizations, so.
I didn't realize legally I had the grounds on religious beliefs.
No, we have, we have students in the classroom system that do not.
Communicable diseases. That looked weird to me.
That's okay to me. I have a.
Yeah, the JLCCA is not necessarily a policy, it's, it's just a copy of the resolution adopted by the Mass Medical Association.
I'm not comfortable having something that's twenty-one years old. I would defer to my colleague Martha as to, I'm not even sure that this is, that it's.
I don't, I don't know, has there changed much to tell you the truth?
A lot of it's, but I think a lot of it is written in the, in your emergency and you have, you have, well, we don't have pandemic, but we're working on that, in your building plans. You, because I remember the stuff about the bleach and all of that. I'm just uncomfortable putting JLCCA in the resolution and also the exhibit.
Yeah.
I, I just think.
I was going to say that the communicable diseases policy includes this.
So we probably can.
So I'm not comfortable with this, and I think we should omit it. And the same, I would argue, we're putting in protocol of, that's twenty-one years old.
Yeah, I agree.
So we're going to omit the exhibit.
Administering medicines to students.
Oh, EpiPens, are they covered? I get the whole thing and it's fine, but what about in an emergency situation, EpiPen? Anyone is the administrator.
Second paragraph.
JNCD, do you have a second paragraph?
School district shall through the district.
This is the one I'll. Just read, just read, yeah.
That's okay.
Don't worry about it, we do.
Second paragraph, the school district shall through the district nurse leader registered with the department of public health and trained personnel in use of EpiPens. Following consultation with the school nurse, students who fall into the following exceptions may self-administer medications. One, students with asthma or other respiratory diseases may possess and administer prescription inhalers. Two, students with cystic fibrosis may possess and administer prescription enzyme supplements. Three, students with diabetes may possess and administer glucose monitoring tests and insulin delivery systems.
So we'll go with this.
It's a very good policy, Jim.
That's the one. That's okay.
The first part was written, they just had to include the other.
Okay, all right, so we'll refer to Jim's.
Yeah.
But all the other stuff that we have in the, that we have, we're, we're still going to have that as well, right?
Yeah.
Because I thought, that made it really clear for administrators and for parents to understand how the administrator, the principal and the secretary, how that would be done.
But, you know, no one but, you know, that, that last sentence is, is, is the strength, there's no one but the school nurse and others listed in the medical administration plan.
Yeah.
May give any medication, so if the nurse is out of the building and there's no one on the plan, no one else to get a pill.
That's what we call our nurse in another building.
Yeah.
One quick question, I'm not sure where I remember this from, an A F N F field trip that was to the paperwork that we fill out at the beginning of the school year in high school. But I remember filling out a form for medicate, over the counter medication that can be taken by the student on an as needed basis, like Tylenol, Motrin, Hamperin, whatever that might be. Do you remember seeing that at the high school?
I thought the only way that they could do that is if they still have a doctor's order.
High school, it is different, but I don't remember what the documentation is, but I know it is, I know they could get Tylenol at the high school.
They can get it, but they can't, I don't think you can take it yourself. You have to go to the school nurse to get it.
Right, but they don't have, like, at the, at the middle school, if I want my daughter to have Tylenol, I have to have a doctor's order or I have to physically go up to the school and give it to her.
That's what we do in the elementary.
But at the high school, they can go to the nurse and get Tylenol and take it without parent involvement, I'm pretty sure.
I remember.
Let's check that. It seems like you need a doctor's order for any kind of, for a nurse.
It's an ongoing, I remember.
So the child takes the medic, the Tylenol themselves? If it's any nurse who stopped the doctor's order to dispense medication.
I'm sorry, there are well over a hundred kids at the high school who take medication whenever they need medication and don't go to the nurse for it.
Right.
Be realistic. But this particular piece of paper is a form that I remember filling out, and I wasn't sure whether it was.
Maybe just can't have somebody reaching in their pocket and saying, nobody knows what it is.
Yeah, you mean that we submit forms to authorize, to get permission from parents for them to self- administer?
It was either for, at the beginning of the school year when you fill out all those forms, it was either that or it was for.
All right, you know what, why don't we just have Chris, let's have Chris check with Sharon, what's the procedure at the high school?
I know that my, my son had, had surgery, he was required, we actually had to get it to the doctor to say that.
Yeah, you do.
Tylenol was okay to give him when he was in pain.
All right, why don't you, we can debate it to death, have Chris find out, okay?
See anything in the handbook that talks about medication.
No.
Guidance program.
I think it's a beautiful thing, just under number two, conditions may be improved. I studied it a long time because I didn't understand it. I think it's saying that there's hope, but it's so negative, what are we worth trying to say to? I have a problem with the quality educational opportunity will benefit the individual society, but I just, I'm just, I'm so sorry.
Someone would ask.
Yeah, I know, I know.
Do. Is that what we're going to say? And if it is, we'll just move on.
That goes back to the development of broad fundamental principles.
Yeah.
And you also, individuals are different, conditions may be improved, guidance is continuous and developmental progress, guidance is not proposed to programs, individuals.
You don't want to say conditions will deteriorate, you want them to improve, so.
We support the individual, anything positive, but not.
Cross it out and just put quality educational opportunity will benefit the individual and society.
All right.
Why not just cross out those?
Quality education opportunity will benefit the individual society, that's a big deal. Okay, thank you.
Guidance program, exhibit.
Are these, both of these necessary?
No, this one is not. This career day thing, it's just to ensure, you know, discriminated against any, that any vendor coming to a career day is an equal opportunity employer.
And we'd have to get them to put that in writing?
Well, they.
We have, we have a very extensive one, that's why I'm asking, and I just think that it's done and it's pretty.
Their documentation that they pass out has to represent the fact that they would.
Okay, so we do need this written JLD.
Under no child, behind, and anyone coming in for career day has to demonstrate that anyway.
Right, so we don't need this in exhibit.
This is kind of becoming irrelevant.
So we're going to omit it? That makes, oh, good.
Foxborough has scholarships policy.
Yeah.
Nineteen eighty-eight.
We don't have it, but you only do.
Individual, business, or organization desiring to award one or more scholarships to a graduating student at Foxborough High School or student attending Foxborough Public Schools must secure approval of superintendent schools or his or her designee. Before such scholarship may be presented, approval will be based on the following criteria. The donor will submit a statement containing name of donor, purpose of scholarship, recommended application procedure, criteria and process for list selection, amount, amounts of scholarship and manner in which the money will be paid. Two, the scholarship must be given as an appropriate memorial and or for worthwhile purposes. Three, the application and selection procedures must be clearly stated and fair to all members of the eligible group of students. Four, application and selection procedures must not result in unreasonable, eh, unreasonable demands being made on the school staff. Five, the application and selection procedures must not result in any hidden costs to the school district. Six, the awarding of the scholarship must not conflict with the law or school committee policy, nor should it imply any endorsement of any organization, business, product, or service by the school or by the recipient. I don't think it's bad.
I don't think it's a bad one. I don't know how accurate it is, but there's a reason to have that, is that some of these scholarships can cost us money. We've had some problems where one, and it hadn't been attended to, and it's still in litigation because the regulatory powers that be have changed, so, in fact, it's still pending. We, we have to now move it because we're paying a fee, so the principle of this scholarship is going to be gone and no one's going to get it unless we get the bank because of the way the regulations were changed. So it probably makes sense for us to have a policy, I just, I think that includes most, I don't know if it includes all, everything that we need. Is there somebody we could have look at that? And we should probably ask for an update on where that stands, because the principal, we were in negotiations with two banking lenders to see if they would release, because the scholarship will self-destruct in X number of years if there's not one payout. Because, it was set up years and years and years ago.
Well, let's worry about that.
There's another one, special recognition, from time to time, upon the recommendation of the administration, the school committee may recognize the outstanding contributions and accomplishments of an individual or student. This recognition may include the retirement of an athlete's number for some other, or some other permanent tribute that will be publicly, publicly displayed in a school building.
We covered that later on, we talked about recognizing volunteers and whatnot.
Yeah.
I don't think we need that one.
Okay. Student gifts and solicitations.
I think it's fine, my only question is, are we really doing this? Solicitation of funds for charitable purposes from students of the school system will be made only as approved by the school committee. We do some, but I don't know that we do all, and I don't know, for instance, the principals.
Wait, is this, is this mass, this is one we didn't have?
Right.
That's, so this is a new policy.
But it's not general law.
No, no, but it's a new policy, that's, we didn't have this policy in our book.
No, yeah, I'm with you.
All right, so, so don't say we're not following it because it wasn't there to begin with.
Yeah.
No, I think what she's saying is that the way it's written may not reflect your practice.
It doesn't reflect our practice.
Well, but once a policy is put in place and everybody reads this book, then.
Yeah, I'm very comfortable with this, my question is, are principals work very closely with the PTOs? And there are, there are times where they approve.
Principal versus the school committee?
Well, again, and I have to defer to Chris, we have not really approved fundraisers per se, it's usually handled by the principal and the superintendent level, okay? So I guess we need to have a discussion, and there's something to be said, I think it should remain at that, at that level. And not other school committee.
Yeah. Like PTO, principal, and superintendent.
This is a nice to have, but it's not required by law, and I think our current practice is a good one with our principals and.
And we do chair it a lot.
All right, let's do this, why don't you, the principals and the superintendent, look at this, whatever you're comfortable with, make sure it gets changed and not to, okay?
Currently, the only time that the choir is going to the superintendent's offices and here hiring multiple schools.
Right, okay.
But that's something that's separate, Jimmy, that's going to come up in a few minutes. This is, this is the initiation of fundraisers by the school.
All right, we'll let them.
Fees, fines, and charges.
We don't have fees, we have a graduation fee, I think somewhere, but I'm just really leery of this one.
You have a nineteen ninety policy that says it's a twenty-five dollar per student.
Class fees.
In the school, in the middle school, twenty-five dollars per student in the school, which will entitle each student to participate in as many extracurricular and intramural activities that are appropriate in the course of the year.
And you know what, that's.
We have class fees at the high school.
There's a fifteen dollar activity fee will be assessed on students in the high school.
Is that true?
Students participating in athletics will be assessed an additional twenty-five dollars per year payable prior to the first.
No, but there is a class fee, in other words, my student government.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's different, that's, that's assessed by them, that's not assessed by you, it's their money.
That goes into the class.
But they can't go to a school event until their class fee is paid.
Right.
Okay, so the other fees we don't have, so my question is, I don't think we.
Lost books, damaged books.
That we do have, okay, so I think if you're going to leave this.
This is talking about.
Well, we talk about it also, we spent a lot of time last week under instructional materials about paying, but so if you. Well, we talk about it also, we spent a lot of time last week under instructional materials about paying, but, so if you need it under students, again, I have no problem with it, but I, I think the first paragraph needs to be omitted, the second, the fifth.
What about lunch fees, like we had children at the end of the year that hadn't paid, and they came to me to ask about not giving them a report card, I said, no.
Oh, oh, okay.
I'm not doing that, I'm not going there.
Well, I suppose they're not gonna give you debt.
Pardon?
The food services department is supposed to let them run up any debt, parents are called immediately.
Just the last couple of days they did, the children would, and they didn't bring their money in, and I said, no. Just eat it. Because you can't deny a child a lunch.
No.
They can't at the middle school, high school.
At the high school?
I think that's fine.
No, I would never do that.
At the middle school and the high school, you are denied, you are not allowed to run up, you, if you don't have your money, okay, even when you prepay, you are not allowed to buy, or actually, you get one free. Like, for instance, they'll tell you, you're, you've used up your last, so if you forget to bring it in, you go without food.
I don't know if that's really true, I mean, I've, I've had a personal experience with that, but I think if Sue were here, Sue Abrams, I think she would say at the middle school, I think she, she might say that in fact, that the child would not get a hot lunch, but they would get something to eat, they wouldn't be denied any food. So I'm not sure how that policy is, is working.
All right, you know what, that's something that he can look at.
Yeah.
There's nothing in the student, in the high school handbook that reflects money for lost.
That's right, that's right.
That's a nice way of putting it. All right, so what are we doing with this?
We're gonna omit the first paragraph?
Yeah, because we don't recognize the need for student fees.
Right, but we need, need to have it for the damaged books.
I, I think, do a way with.
Lost and damaged materials isn't, isn't handbook.
So we don't really, if it's in the handbook, we don't really need this, then, because it talks about replacing our.
I was looking for textbooks.
Yeah, but what about the middle school, that's the high school handbook.
Kids take the books home?
I'm supposed to. That's an interesting question, we don't, do we, I don't think we charge fees at the UHAR.
Is there a loss?
And we don't make people pay for disposables.
But if you don't try to back in, they charge you for the book.
Yeah.
In middle school?
That's there.
Do they?
We send them, in the elementary, we send them a notice if they've lost a book, but we don't make, if the parent doesn't pay for it, you know. These library books, what, library books, we send a notice on, but we have no, I don't, I don't keep them from having a report card or whatever, I mean, come on, they're only.
The copy of the UHAR doesn't have an index, so.
Yeah, I can't find it either.
And we have nothing.
We should look into that.
I thought we talked about it last week, where we talked about instructional materials, but it probably should be referenced. Are we gonna come back to this?
I'm gonna have Chris and Sue Abrams look into it.
Yeah.
And they'll get back to Jim as to what we've changed, we just need to be, okay?
All right, student records?
Yeah.
Or are we missing something?
This is that fees policy, I'm just ready.
Okay.
I'm sorry, went to final note on page sixteen of the UHAR, it does say that the student is responsible for books and materials that are issued to him or her, the student must pay for lost or damaged books and materials.
I would think so.
No, it doesn't state fees, but it just.
Okay, good. Yeah, we encourage them to pay.
Yeah, but they can't.
It's right under chewing gum, you know. Student records, these are two required documents.
Okay.
Why does, why does sixty years?
That's the way it is.
Okay.
It's the record attachment. Well, that's the permanent record.
Yeah.
You can destroy the temporary record.
We don't need to spell it out, but.
The records are usually condensed to.
Life expectancy.
They have life expectancy, that's, it's a point in life.
Tactory records are paper.
Figure of five, sixty years.
So that's clear to our people in the record keepers.
And that hasn't changed, that's, that's been in existence for a while.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Student photographs, JRD.
Question, do we, are, what does R appear under again? Regulations, do we need to have the student record, that, that is what you said, that's the second piece?
On the last sentence of first, the first paragraph, we don't do pictures through a bidding process.
Oh, actually, it's starting, it's changing.
Oh, when?
But I flagged the same thing, we never have, and Paul Jackson, that's where I wanted to see if Paul can review this. Today's, this year is the first year where they're actually looking at, the PTOs will now kind of take it on, but there'll be perhaps a master bid, because I, I've spoken with Paul a couple of times, the cost of photography is outrageous.
Yeah.
And we're not getting the profit, so we're letting different people come in, and, and parents are paying very heavily for the cost of pictures, it's outrageous.
All right, so let Paul look into it and figure out what we're gonna do about it.
Okay, done.
Not with everything.
With J, with J.
Okay, quick, look at K.
She's ready to go.
I don't wanna have to do this again, let's see us get through it. Call commitment.
I didn't have anything on this one on L.
Oh, no mockups?
No.
KA, KA one? One or the other, or neither?
Can we just be clear on the title? Uh, one or the other?
Yeah, you wouldn't have both of these, it's just two different, two different styles.
I, I have a question on the first one, KA, about the advisory committees. Would that, I mean, example, that could probably be like the drug and alcohol subcommittee maybe that were, I mean, advisory?
If you were.
We haven't really appointed it, though.
Well, but if you were looking at, well, when you did your superintendent search, that was an advisory committee.
Oh, that's right, that's right, okay.
If you were doing strategic planning, you might have an advisory committee as well.
Okay, that's right. I don't know if they have a preference, I guess if you made me choose, I'd go with the second one.
I'd go with the second one, because it, go with the second one, because it gives.
The only issue I really have a problem with, because it gets very confusing, and it would be very confusing with the index, again, our titles are kind of inconsistent, it, it's, pick, pick one. Is it community relations, and this is a goal, we talk about our community relationships, community relations, and these are my goals, right? School community relation goals, it just, which is, and will be consistent?
It's school, community.
Yeah.
The relationship.
You know what, people, it's too awkward, it's community relationships, or community relations.
Right.
Okay, or if you need to have goals, and, but you can't have that many words, it's, doesn't make sense, and, so which, what are you, what, which one is it?
How about school, community, relationship?
Whatever.
Well, you just say community relations goals.
Whatever, it's too many words, pick, pick one, guys.
Community.
Because this is gonna be ours.
It's all school, everything's school.
All right, okay. Community relations, community relations, and we're gonna go with the second one?
Right.
Yep, that's.
It could be the same thing to the.
That's exactly what I have, okay.
Okay, that one. Okay, do you have any?
We're on parent relations, relations with parents.
Other than the title?
Yeah, last paragraph, last sentence, opportunities for participation in all school activities and programs, it's a good idea, district.
That makes sense. Annie Paul?
At all.
Yeah, and it's just, and programs, you don't need. And what do we call on that one?
Parent relations.
I'm sorry, programs you.
Last sentence, opportunities for participation in all school activities and programs.
All right. Non-custodial parents' rights.
This is, this is law on this, Jimmy, you'll have to hold on to this.
This, this reflects the change. You didn't get.
I know, I have this.
We have that.
This is the two thousand seven.
That's the new one.
January twenty-fifth, two thousand seven. Yeah, that's the old one.
Okay.
So it's still a thousand?
So we should review that one, though.
Why don't you have Chris look at that, because.
And we're not generally putting forms in the policy book.
Yes, I don't, yes.
So that's all, this stuff is on.
Okay.
Relations with parent organizations, do you have that one?
Yeah.
Annie?
I'm sorry.
KBE.
I liked it, I liked it.
Yeah.
Okay. Community involvement in decision making?
Beautiful thing.
See how it's cross-referenced back to advisory committees? Gifts to schools, do you have that one?
Yes.
Or your public gifts to schools?
No, public gifts.
Public gifts.
Yeah.
So this is the one?
This is the, I emailed this file to Paul.
This is where it came from. He downloaded it.
I clicked this today from the same file.
Yeah, but Paul's, Paul's not here.
We were given this a week ago.
I know, it's the one I emailed to Paul prior to your meeting two weeks ago.
Wow.
So this is not the current one, so we shouldn't discuss it?
No, he's gonna read you it.
There is a Foxborough one that says, all gifts material or monetary, all gifts, comma, material or monetary, presented to the Foxborough Public Schools or any one of its units shall require prior approval by the school committee. Unless otherwise specified by the donor and agreed to by the school committee, any such gift shall, shall be considered a gift to the entire school system, and is to be available for use whenever practical by the school system. The presenting party is to be made aware of this policy before any donation is accepted.
I like that.
Kind of says the same thing.
Yeah.
I like that one better. Yeah, I like that one.
Okay.
So are you gonna use Foxborough as a?
Yeah. Don't forget, we're, we're gonna get another whole copy for us to look at, so.
Then there's a contributions from school support groups. It's the exact same, KCD. Contribution from school support groups, file KCE. The term school support group is defined to mean any group or organization with serious interest and concern for a specific activity for students in a, it's like boosters, I guess, school support groups.
I'm sorry, is this mask or Foxborough?
No, this is Foxborough, nineteen eighty-eight.
No, I think mask, mask has it, has it very specifically about boosters.
This is boosters, yeah.
No, you have, mask has a very, has a clear one.
Public's right to know?
Why would they put a student in parentheses? Didn't make sense. It's an individual employee or student, right? Employee or student, or the student's parent, I don't know why that.
But because if it's, it's, it goes like employee or student, and then you look down for authorized in writing for released by the employee or student or student's parent, so it's, if somebody's looking for, it's meant to be the student and the student's name, signature.
I'll, I'll remember that answer.
News media relations, news releases.
I want public relations or whatever. Just back to the public's right to know, do we want to say, what, that last paragraph, each building administration administrator is authorized and required to use all means available to keep parents and others in the particular school's community informed about the school program? Because, I mean, it's not only authorized, but we want to ensure that all parents, that the administrator is giving parents and others the information, not just authorized, but required, or is that, is that too stringent?
Well, the required to use all means.
Yeah, required to use all means, yeah.
Versus using the means that best communicate with the parents of the school. Use all means means, you got your requirement needed, your email, your request to be passed. I understand what you're trying to say, but putting that required there.
Yeah, okay, sure.
News media relations, news releases.
It's public relations, or I just, again, news media relations, news release, what are we trying to say? Maybe because we've never really had good public relations, maybe we should be saying it's public relations.
Well, we never had the policy, I don't think.
Nope.
That's relieved.
I like this policy.
I like this.
Okay.
So you're okay with the title, Jimmy, we'll go back.
Yeah, I love the title.
Public complaints. Remember, we had student complaints in the student session, and staff complaints in the staff session.
School building administrator must also be capped, politically sensitive to our administrators. You have to put in, in the one, two, third paragraph, you gotta put in the superintendent, it's, a report of the disposition of the matter will be made to the school committee, or by the superintendent, then placed in the official files. It seemed like superintendent needed to be put in there. Chris, what do you think? Whatever you're comfortable with.
Yeah, no, I, that is referred to. Yeah, it does, actually, because the next paragraph said that it's referred to the superintendent, so it, it needs to just be in agreement.
Yep.
And we need public complaints in the exhibit?
Because it's different if somebody feels that their equal educational opportunities have been violated, it's a different, it's a different complaint procedure.
So we need that.
So what, public complaints about school personnel? And we would also then need to include the regulations?
Yes.
The way I'm reading this is that the only one could have be placed in official files of the one that the complaints that drove as far as the school committee.
Where are you?
On the third paragraph.
On which one?
Of what?
Oh, sorry, of KEB, public complaints. This is a complaint that's been presented to the committee, and go back to proper channels, is adjusted according with the back of the school committee, and a report of the disposition of the matter will be made to the committee, and then placed in official files, it almost sounds like the only ones that get filed are the ones that get as far as the committee.
I thought we asked that the next paragraph coincide, you know, that was fixed already.
We just agree, we just put it on.
Everything's gonna be filed somewhere, so in some cases, because this is the high.
The official files are the public record files.
Right.
And if something's handled internally within the system and never comes before the committee, it would not go before, it would not go in the, in the public record files.
Okay, so public record, official records actually mean public record files.
Right, it's the school committee's official files, which are public, which are the public record files.
Okay, and in the last sentence, is there a timeframe in which to reply?
No, I've had timeframes in, and we always run into problems when in and around school vacations, summer breaks, if something comes in at the end of the school year or right before a vacation, when you put a timeframe in, invariably, one of those things messes up the timeframe. Someone gets into trouble because they couldn't meet a deadline because of vacation, so.
Well, the last paragraph kind of addresses that, and we might wanna put the superintendent, the committee and the superintendent, express the professional staff to receive complaints courteously and to make a proper reply, proper means timely in my mind, you know, not, not months.
Covers it all.
Well, the last paragraph, public complaints?
Yeah.
I mean, you could interpret that as.
Even put in the word timely instead of proper.
Yeah, timely, yeah.
The committee expects the professional staff to receive complaints courteously and to make a timely reply, or to answer.
I was just alluding to the fact that on the following, on the actual exhibit, it just alludes to thirty days.
Because that's built into the statute that governs equal educational opportunity, and that's a state process, it's not a local district process, so, and I'm not sure you wanna put thirty days in something like this.
Especially when you have the whole summer.
These are typically like four or five day turnaround things that people expect to hear back in.
We would have.
Yeah, so if you, the reason the thirty days is in there is because of vacations and holidays and so forth, but to put that type of timeframe in a, in a policy like this one, you know, things would never get resolved at a time and another.
So are we putting timely in or not?
Yes, timely.
Thank you, okay.
So are KEB?
Yep, public complaints about school personnel.
Okay.
That has to be there, right?
Yeah.
Next one has to be there?
Yes.
And we have to have the regulations on that as well.
Okay, I have a question about the public complaints about school personnel, that has to be submitted in my, is that right?
Yes.
Is that by the last paragraph?
No, it's under, it's two factors, it's in the Public Employers Protection Act, something, and also under the executive session items under the open meeting law, is that there are certain protocols you have to follow. You could not. You could not just have somebody show up at a meeting and make a verbal complaint about someone who works for the district, they have to, because you have to notify that employee in writing, in advance.
Right, exactly, yeah, of course, yeah, okay.
Jim, the only one is the second paragraph on number two, offer to send him the appropriate form.
If you had a public complaint form, but if you don't have one, then it's just locked up. In writing.
Complaint in writing, and then, because we don't have a.
We have a form of all.
Yeah, it seems.
Pick A, B, C.
Yeah, exactly.
Pick number two on.
The second paragraph, the last.
Is it K E B R or?
K E B, yes, R. So it's, it's the second paragraph under number two, just delete in, offer to send him the appropriate form and just file his complaint in writing regarding a.
Okay.
Dead? K E C.
I think that A is the same thing on this, on the.
Last week, we omitted that, we changed the policy, did we give those updates to Jim?
Yes.
Because she would ask them, we didn't have a form, so we omitted that under the instructional piece.
Yes.
So, so do we need to omit A or rewrite it? We said submit in writing.
So we just submit in writing. That's why I just. Complaint in writing.
All right, put complaint.
That's A, right?
A.
Right, just after the word two where it says, "Sign a complaint."
Yeah.
Just from there out, and then I just put submit a complaint in writing.
Yes.
Okay, perfect, perfect.
Okay. Use of school buildings, the Foxborough one is from, one I have is from nineteen ninety, use of school buildings and facilities, I don't know if there's a more up-to-date.
No.
Version.
I like this version.
Which one are you talking about?
The mask version.
Yeah, I do too.
The only, my only question is, when there is vandalism, like the basketball, who pays for it? We've not received any compensation when there has been vandalism at the.
Well, whoever is there using it, if you notice the vandalism, then they should be responsible for it, I think it says that.
But they claim it's the parents, you know.
Well, the hot pot case proven who did it, number one, but certainly if, if I was gonna have somebody use my building, I would go around and see if there was any damage that was done, that's visible, and then to check it the next day, and if you see that something's out of, then you can say immediately, this was not like this yesterday, so, you know.
Does the, permission to use, does that go through the superintendent's office? Or does it go through the building?
Yes.
Now, in the.
We're on K F, right?
Yes. In the Foxborough version of this, there is a piece on here about damage or loss. Any damage or loss resulting from the use of school buildings, equipment, or other facilities by the renter will be determined by the superintendent of schools. A, assessment of the amount of payment incurred by damage or loss will be determined by the superintendent of schools. Additional charges for services rendered beyond the stipulations of the permit.
Or designate.
Will be determined by the superintendent of schools. All repairs or replacement or damage to the loss of buildings, equipment, or facilities under the jurisdiction of the school committee. Occurred during the period of use by the renter will be done at the expense of the renter by the superintendent of schools.
Or designate.
So, no, I think that should be.
That's up under.
And will they not build, and should be given to them so they can see it?
I think they're made aware of that, because they have to sign some sort of a contract with us.
Yeah, I don't get that, but I'll take that.
Yeah.
Well, there's this application, but it doesn't, nineteen ninety-three, so I don't know if the form has been the same.
Yeah, I'll check.
All right, some questions, check on that.
It is stayed from the form, we use them on a regular basis.
So we'll add that vandalism, damage section to this version of K F.
To which one, the K F?
K F, K F. Now, I don't know if you wanna keep K F dash R or just simply include it in your packet for something like this in your school building use forms.
Well, there are actually some things on the R that are not right. That are not right. So, yep, number eight.
We don't allow, yeah, we just.
And number five is not accurate, so.
That's right.
And I think you're gonna be looking at, the policy is very, the application for renters and use.
It would be appropriate to have this list of regula, a list of regulations attached to the form.
It's on the contract, yeah.
Yes.
It's on, it's part of the application. It's very, yeah, very specific what you.
How about if you look at that? Okay.
I would admit that unless. If you, if you put on K F, number four, and then number three below, we don't, I would strike the word parks and just put playground activities and play or playgrounds, because we have a skate park, okay, that's not run by the school, we really don't have school-owned parks on K F. We have a skate park.
K F?
K F.
Number three, down at the bottom where it says parks and playgrounds.
So take that out?
And strike the word metropolitan, again, it's not, it's, we're a local town.
No, playgrounds, we have playgrounds, but not parks.
Because it's confused, people might confuse that.
And what other one did you want?
And then number seven, metropolitan.
Metropolitan. And the second paragraph, it says, "Only worthy educational, civic, and charitable purposes will be served," worthy is an, is there, there's another word that we should probably use.
Where are you?
On top.
The second paragraph.
Okay.
An appropriate?
That's fine, whatever.
Yeah.
Worthy is emotional judgmental.
When an educational, civic, or charitable purpose will be served, instead of when a.
Beautiful K, that's beautiful. When a educational.
And.
Yes, thank you. Forget me, guys, we're almost near the end.
Public publications in schools.
I was very comfortable with it.
Yeah.
I would just, you need to customize it, the very last paragraph should read, "For the purpose of this policy, please delete local P T A, put parent teacher organizations," and we need to spell that out, "and then put in parentheses, P T O, and parent advisory councils, parentheses, packs." Because that, we, you really wanna reverse the saying. Will be considered as school groups.
Okay.
Now, K H B.
K H B.
Okay, it says, "No advertising of commercial products," well, we, Taylor School, all three elementary schools did the Blue Cross Blue Shield Jump Up and Go one year. Taylor School did it, expanded last year from grades one through four.
So would you do?
Wait a second, it's no advertising, but it's been brought to my attention that, from one of the wellness teachers, that apparently some of the schools don't wanna do it because they feel it's advertising. If we do that, and all we do is just send home the sheet of paper, we can't use the American Dairy Association or the Crest toothpaste people to come in and talk to the children about brushing their teeth or a dentist, so I just wanted to bring that.
But doesn't it say free teaching aids if the content is approved by the administration? So doesn't it let you off, give you that flexibility? If it's ready to the curriculum, you would be able to make that decision. But just to put Crest's new product, send it home with.
Put it in a bin and put it on the lobby, that's one thing, but to actually integrate it into. Because we did, we did have, this year, we had over forty percent of our grades one through four children take part in the Jump Up and Go and the Tuesday Challenge, we had over seventy-five percent of the kids.
You know, that was such a good wellness program that, I don't.
Well, you could also give yourself an out here and just say, at the end of that first sentence, add without permission, or without prior permission of the superintendent.
Okay. Perfect.
So that's always gonna, the policies know, but.
But there are exceptions when it's a worthwhile program.
But I'd still think that you're.
We're not telling people to buy Blue Cross Blue Shield.
Blue Cross, that Blue Cross Blue thing, that would fall, I think, under the teaching aids.
Yes.
Definitely.
As well as, you know, when you had the Crest people come in and talk about tooth health.
Yeah, and they didn't even mention Crest toothpaste at all.
No, no.
Now, the only thing we have to be careful up here is vending machines. For instance, at the high school, we do allow vending machines, they're, it's product advertisement, isn't it?
I thought we.
You're not gonna put.
I thought they were generic, I don't know if they have labels on the outside of the machine.
And are your books, we used to take advertising?
That's student publication.
Your book is student publication?
That's exempted on the.
I just wanna make sure I'm clear. And boosters, we're gonna cover, boosters are separate, they're not, and they're gonna be covered, that's not, booster clubs are not considered under our advertising.
Well, it wouldn't be a commercial product, so if they're, if they're advertising.
Oh, yeah.
I mean.
A booster club will accept an advertiser and commercial, they will accept, they're separate from the schools.
Yeah, they're not, they're not governed by. They're like outside.
Visitors to the schools.
We need some work.
All right.
The school committee does understand our security procedures, so we know it's not.
Under three, I would, I would like to see something about signing a visitor's pass and where.
We need to do some work on this question.
All right, so why don't you guys look at this, because this really is your bulk and.
Form five should be omitted and I have the second paragraph, because I don't think.
So this is Chris in principles.
Parents to be encouraged to just show up and attend classes.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, yeah. Opens the door there, I mean, I think it has to.
Huge wide.
May I just ask one other thing, and I think we're getting better and better at this, but the consistency between school, our schools have evolved because their situation was set up a little differently, various security procedures, we've gotten better and better at being consistent, I'd like it to be system-wide. For instance, some places you know, we're requiring you sign out, but in other buildings, that's, you don't have to. We were requiring visitor badges absolutely in certain buildings, and now it's caught on and it's actually being used, just to be consistent.
Well, this is something that.
Yeah.
We've got better and better, just to keep doing that.
Safety and procedures.
I think every building's pretty secure as far as safety.
I'd like to do that a lot.
It's gonna be done.
Relations with booster organizations?
It's fine with me.
It's fine, I mean, the person, Mas recommends that we have that, so that's fine.
Now, the next three are kinda optional.
Oh, we have wonderful relations.
Police authorities, planning authorities, and government.
I like them all.
Yeah, just, it's not, we should, we do, so it should say will.
And firemen too, like, instead of with police authority, fire and police authorities.
You say public safety.
Yeah, public safety, because we work very closely with them.
Oh, public safety, yeah.
Covers it all.
Could I just?
And L?
The planning authorities, it's, and it's, isn't it with the, relations with the town of Foxborough, we're very, the title on K L K or whatever, it's not local government authorities, we take the work that we do and the partnership with the municipal side very seriously, so I think we should just customize the title, but the intent is fine.
So what do you want the title to say?
Something to say, our town, town of Foxborough, or whatever my colleagues want.
With the local government.
Relations with the town of Foxborough, relations.
You were the one with so many words.
Yeah, you're right, but you know what? In Foxborough, we understand what that means.
How about Foxborough Municipal?
Yeah, I was just thinking municipal, governing.
Government. Foxborough Municipal.
Foxborough Municipal.
Or town relations, we have parent relations.
What?
Community relations, town relations, if you wanna be sure.
Yeah. Municipal administrators, or no?
How about relations with the Foxborough Local Government?
Yeah, okay.
How's that? Okay.
Let's leave it the way it was.
Oh, sure, you started it.
Jim wants us to be sure.
No, I don't want you to, you're the one who said less words, not me.
It's just, it's something that's special to the town of Foxborough, it's a nice way of customizing if we'd wanna do.
That's fine, I have no problem whatsoever, just tell me what you want it to say.
Okay, we're doing.
Wait, 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 we're not changing it to?
We did.
We did.
I have, we just, relations with Foxborough Local Government.
Yeah. That's, that's what we, that's what I said.
Because local government.
The select man is all.
The thing going, everybody, so that covers it all.
And we do, Kate's right, we do have a great.
We are good, and it's getting better, so we need to build on it. Okay, down to the wire.
Education agency, L A?
What is an education agency? It reads beautifully here.
Sped group, Sped Collaborative, working on higher education, higher education groups.
And this is recommended for?
Well, we always have some introductory type.
I say, okay.
Thank you for playing.
Other schools and other school districts, or other schools and school districts, collaboration. I'm trying to argue with this.
I just questioned hospitals, and I'm not sure that the hospital should be in there. Their second paragraph, "The cooperation may extend to research, providing transportation for children to special schools and programs." I don't think we should specialize hospitals, we have, we have too many medically fragile children, and I, I think under our special. It's programs, it's.
Programs, funds.
Yeah, okay.
And construction of facilities that may be efficiently used on a cooperative basis, that's a big budget, that to me should be eliminated.
Where are you?
Again, it's the second paragraph, it's, that is a major funding issue, and I can't.
But it may not necessarily be initiated by you.
Right.
Yeah.
I don't think that should be in our policy.
Okay. Is there any else?
Let me read it again, hang on a second.
Just because you take it, that doesn't mean you can't do it.
Yeah.
Exactly.
I just think that's.
You'd feel like it's gonna.
It's a major initiative, and gosh, it's taken so many years, and we still have high school in a bit, I can't imagine.
Relations with non-public schools.
Will you approve a private school?
New one.
Actually, the superintendent doesn't.
That's not charter schools, that's not, that's a public school.
Yes.
Okay, so Bishop Dean or?
Well, not anymore, I mean, they've already been approved.
We're talking about a new one coming in, in your backyard.
Any more.
You tell us we have to have it, but I think we have to have it.
We do have to have it.
Now, Foxborough's policy manual had a membership and collaboratives policy, a research activities policy, these are nineteen eighty-seven, student teachers and interns, which is.
Isn't that all covered under the, in contracts and stuff?
Well, the membership with collaboratives is, it says, "Superintendent is encouraged to take whatever steps are necessary to ensure effective participation in those collaboratives in which membership is held. Furthermore, when opportunities arise."
You may or may not need it.
Yeah, let me just take it with me.
They're pretty old. It's probably the first time.
But it may not be. Those two, and the student teaching and internships, there's a Foxborough version, and then we have the M U S C version in front of you.
What's the difference, because we don't have the.
M U S C is.
Let's see, "The school committee is cognizant of the importance of the preparation of future teachers and encourages proposals from teacher preparation institutions for the placement and supervision of student teachers and interns in the Foxborough Public Schools." Most likely go to you, but. Superintendent or his or her husband shall exercise care in the selection and placement of student teachers to the extent that the practice teaching experience benefits the student teacher without jeopardizing the education of the youngsters with whom the student works. A student teacher is defined as an undergraduate or graduate who, for the purposes of exposure to the actual teaching professions and classroom experience, is placed under the supervision of a classroom teacher. In the case of a student teacher, no compensation will be made. An intern is defined as someone who, in preparation for an advanced degree, is required to obtain experience in an atmosphere of on-the-job training. Upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the intern may be employed at a rate of compensation which has been established by the school committee. To improve the quality of the teaching profession, the Foxborough Public Schools will make every reasonable effort to follow current State Department of Education guidelines.
Intern gets credit as well as compensation? Intern gets credit as well as compensation? What year is that policy?
Eighty-eight.
Chris, is that true?
You have a ticket. This one's good. This one's.
Yeah, let's go with that. Let's go with the one.
The only, I'm, I like some of the wording in the other one. I just don't think it's, it's up to date. But I can live with either one, whichever one Chris is most comfortable with. There is one thing I can't live with, Chris. I don't think you want to be saying all initial arrangements with the colleges and universities are subject to school committee approval. That's gotta come from, that's, yes. That's the only thing I.
Subject to the super, because you have to sign off on.
Right, educational institution require that, right?
The superintendent or his designated, or the designation, right?
All right, so superintendent.
No.
Oh, or is it?
It says like sometimes the assistant superintendent.
Yes, sometimes the assistant superintendent.
I am so proud of us. We said if we stayed about an hour, we'd get it done. We did.
You're right there, Jim.
Jim, I just want to personally thank you for making this as painless as possible.
You guys did all the work.
Yeah. You're the one that sorted it, put it together, and walked us through it. And I, I want you to know that we really do appreciate.
This, I have to tell you, this is the fastest one I've ever done. And I mean, I don't mean that, that you didn't do your due diligence and do your work. But it was a very aggressive schedule. I had my doubts we were gonna be able to stay on it, but.
Well, when I was called one day to give an update, I got a lot of flack because I gave them what you had told me. And we said it was not acceptable to be approved of this next June. So the good news is that we all, you know, we've given up our Friday nights throughout the summer. Could you take a moment and just level set us for the next step, just so we're prepared, Jim?
Yeah, we've, we've tried, you know, processing all the sections with all the corrections, comments, rotations. I'll go back. There's, I'll make a list and send it to Chris of the, there's a couple of policies that are on hold that further research needs to be made, or we wanted someone to look at, or whatever. Get that list together. Send that, get that to you. And then, in the meantime, we're, we've got, you know, pretty much everything up through. I think G and H are already, we've already processed the corrections. So I just have to bring, I have to meet with Paul to go over section I.
Right.
And he was on vacation this week, and then I go on vacation for three weeks.
Okay.
So when I get back, I'll meet with Paul, process, get the information for section I. In the meantime, I'm gonna go into, I am going into my office next week, and I'll give my administrative assistant the.
Changes.
J, K, and L. So we'll get those going as well. So I'm, I'm gonna just kind of skip over I as far as our work goes and go right on to J, K, and L so that she's not waiting on.
So she can work on that.
She can work on J, K, and L.
While we work on the ones that we pulled out to talk to different people.
And then, so I would imagine by, I'm back on the twenty-second of August, and then be able to immediately wrap it up within a couple of days.
So when would we get the final draft? Would that be September?
Uh, no, I would say probably by the end of that week.
So the end of August.
Which would be.
Well, don't give us a date.
And August is fine.
Because here's an awful lot.
Now, could we?
Well, twenty-second is a Tuesday. So, yeah, around the twenty-fifth.
I'll hold you to it. Just.
Somewhere near the end of that, for, end of the week, I'm back from vacation.
Would you have any problem with whatever you give us if we approved that and then inserted some of the things that were pulled out? So at least we had something.
I would imagine that we'd be able to, I mean, I don't know how long this is gonna take you to go through these things pulled up.
Okay.
And I'm gonna get, and there are some, well, there are some from other sections that other people have.
And we need to review those. So, yeah.
Okay.
I would imagine by that week, you'll have the whole.
Beautiful.
We should be very, very close.
Yeah.
Because it's gonna take us some time. That's why I just wanted to go through and, okay, now, what do we agree? And is it there? Just so that we, each of us will do it. We probably want to then come together as a group in case we find, because we will find something.
Well, I think in those, those policies too, that we've given to Chris, we'll want to review before we.
Yes. I'm, I'm sure he'll get them off to us before we, he gets them off to.
And then, once you give me final approval of the book, we'll print the pretty copy, which is, you know, the bright white paper with, you know, and put it in a nice binder with a cover and, for the CD. So you'll have it in Word, electronic, and then in a hard copy of the book.
You know what's amazing? When we went through this process, how many policies, in fact, we didn't have. And that was a real eye-opener for me.
And how outdated many of them.
Yeah, how, well, I, I knew a lot of them were outdated from having had my possession. And I was kind of surprised that we'd never gone the extra mile and done it.
If you, if you want to, you can then have your tech person convert the Word files to PDF and put the whole thing up on your website. Or we can talk about our online program.
Okay.
Can we copyright this?
No, it's a public record.
No. Just looking for revenue streams. Ask us, asking the question. Yeah, I know. We paid you, and now it's the Fox.
I just want you to know.
Well, you know, under the public records law, you can charge so much page.
That's right, too.
Yeah.
No, I, this.
Might question whether that's a good idea or not, but.
Well, we got a PDF.
Like I said, if, if, if your tech person is, is, is good enough, they can just convert it to PDF very easily. And you can put the whole thing right up on your website. The only, the only downside is you can't really search it very well.
At that point.
P D S. You can't search for individual content.
Probably we're gonna highlight some of the most common. I would love to, you know, not overwhelm our website, because when we put too much information on, it makes it un-user friendly. I would love to ask the school councils, to ask parents, what are the most used or the most, to put this whole thing in is ridiculous. It will ensure that this is no longer a living document or one that's used. So the ones that are most important or, I'd like to get the feedback.
I know you're looking at us when you say that.
No, I'd like to hear from administrators, from school, from school councils and others. You want the whole thing on the West?
Absolutely.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I, I think so, too.
You can actually do a little of both, though. You can put the whole thing up, and then you can highlight certain areas that are most.
Frequently accessed.
Well, it's on index.
There are two ways. Because there's gonna be an index for every section. So when you go to look at, you know, if you're looking for something on students, you go to look at the student section. You know, the first index will be A is this, B is this, C is this. Then the next one would be, here's all of the J policies, which are the student section. Then you, so you find the title. Now you can go and find the actual policy with the file code.
So now, when you go onto Mas, you can look up Ludlow, and you can look up the other schools, all right?
Right.
But Foxborough's.